Remember the songs of the shtetl where my parents sang to me?
Wow, wow.
So we move across the globe.
Yes, this is, it's like Wanderer, The Wanderers.
This gentleman is an intellectual teacher of literature from Tehran University.
Does he have something here?
He really does.
I love this last line. Tragedy, go ahead. Tragedy has made my softer skin hide behind a harder one. Astonishing. Look at that gaze, oh my. Here's another one. I found this portrait quite fascinating. Was this just a sort of spontaneous photo or did you take the time to light it and do...
All of these images are photographed with natural light. We would walk into their homes, into their YMCA at times, but just a random spot with no preparation.
I want to share her with us. Let me come over this way. If you could come here, Barbara and Barry.
Let me introduce, this is Dr. Gwen Bishop. She's 88 years old. And one of the things that she said that really touched me is, "I have a problem with too much ethnocentricity and I would like to see people mix groups more than we have in this generation. There has to be a balance between assimilation and maintaining your own culture. It all goes back to a model. I don't know how far away you can get from certain stereotypes."
Amazing. And this is third-generation college graduate. Pretty astonishing. Now, this one truly touched me because there's a story here. If you could introduce us to Faustino from the Philippines, correct?
From the Philippines. He has his military cap on and he's... I think that, I think that a lot of his life is the pride of what he did during the war.
What he survived.
And what he's, what he went through.
Yes.
Yeah. He's this, I'm going to read again. He's a survivor of the Baton Death March during World War II and was incarcerated as a survival, survivor of Japanese concentration camp at Kapaz Tarlock. He was imprisoned in provisional jail of Ilako Sir Vigon, fought a guerrilla war. He's been decorated and he's been admired by Bill Clinton when Clinton was President of the United States.
It's just amazing. There are so many of these stories. You've got to come down and see this exhibit. Once again, the website so people can get the information.
What is the website?
Quiet Heroes Over Eighty.
No.
No? Okay, we'll make sure that it's on the television screen. Now, we're going to take a little break and see yet another video interview, so please, stay with us.
Have there been moments or experiences in your life that hold more significance than our times?
My folks were very poor people and so they never gave me the education I wanted. Actually, I've been a registered nurse, but they couldn't afford to leave me go to college to get to... And now look at my granddaughter doing it.
And what brought me to America? I came fairly old, so it wasn't at all money that was after. My American dream was the dream of freedom and my very Islamic, the core of my Islamic belief, what created all living things programmed. Man, choice. And you got the responsibility. It is this concept of freedom. To me, a human being is the being that is free. And I came to America to live in a free atmosphere.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. You know, it's always a pleasure when you find a secret gem in the midst of Los Angeles. And I thought we'd talk now with Nicolet Komanos, who is a representative of the gallery here. Can you tell me a little of the history because this is a unique place?
Oh, thank you. The gallery was started about 25 years ago by our director, Lydia Takashita, and it's a nonprofit. And Lydia has been the director and curator for all these years. And the mission of the gallery is to show the diversity, not only of, in terms of ethnicity, but in terms of gender, age. And we have a wide variety of artists who show here. I mean, many galleries show mid-career artists and artists who are well-established, but we also show artists who are just beginning in their career.
I see. And just based on the uniqueness of this Quiet Heroes Over Eighty, you can see that that's a very interesting perspective and Lydia is to be congratulated for that.
Absolutely.
How long ago did you move into this building? Was it 25 years?
I think we've been here about 10 years.
Wow, outstanding.
But the gallery actually started, the first venue was in Little Tokyo.
I see. So you've moved around a little bit.
It's moved around and we still have another location.
Okay, so it's L.A. Art Corps. This is the brewery annex. And what's the other location?
The other one is Union Center.
Okay, Union Center. Now, we're going to rejoin Barbara and Barry Schaefer to talk some more about these extraordinary pictures of our Quiet Heroes Over Eighty. Now, I'm sharing with you a picture that really caught my eye of a lovely lady, Lydia Fermansky, and you were telling me about the challenges of her very small apartment.
So often it would be so difficult to find the right setting to be able to take a good image. This one, I was almost falling off her balcony because I was able to...
I understand. And Barbara, to me, she looks like she's got a lot of living in her life.
You know, Lydia, not only was she, is she a quiet hero, but she also was a hero in her early days.
And recognized for that.
And a recognized hero. She was, she is known as a righteous Gentile and was honored by the State of Israel. And what that means is that she helped the Jews escape persecution.
Nazi Germany.
Nazi Germany. And she has a wonderful, amongst other things, one of her wonderful stories is that she harbored an eight-year-old boy in her home against her parents' wishes. She was 19 years old.
Oh my.
And then walked him to safety through the forest, trading her jewelry for food for them until she handed him over to the Red Cross.
Remarkable. I understand this, a smaller portion of this exhibition will be at the Bridge Gallery downtown, correct?
Right, at City Hall.
Right. So from 14th of May to June 18th, if you miss it here, you perhaps will have a chance to see it there. But again, thank you for being here with us today on Aging in L.A. And this is worth a trip because it's not just the words and the images. It'll make you think. These are our fellow citizens. Anyway, thank you for joining us and again, thank you.
No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation and you can be towed.
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole.
G'day. Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, the 5th of April, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We're broadcast live on Channel 35 and welcome our viewers as well as those who are here We're also available online at lacity.org where you can find our agendas which are posted there 72 hours in advance and 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Those agendas are also available in our city buildings and through the city clerk's office. We're also listen-able to through our telephones at 213-621-CITY. That is a service called Council Phony. You can call in and listen to the council meetings. And finally, you can show up in Van Nuys or San Pedro City Halls and not only listen in, but testify remotely from those locations, avoid some traffic, and we can hear you here and see you on Channel 35 as well. So about five ways to take in your council meetings and to follow your city council in action. I want to thank those members of the council who are here on time. Councilmembers Cardenas, Labange, Rosenthal Smith, Wesson, Zine. We are waiting a quorum. We only have Ms. Hahn excuse, so Mr. Alakon, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coretz, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry, if you'll please join us. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for being with us. We are waiting two more members and those members are now late. Any of the members of the audience who would like to give public testimony on the items that are before us, all items receive public hearings either in the committee that they are heard in or here in the full council. If items have already had their hearing in committee, in order for that to be reopened, a council member needs to move that here, otherwise it is just council discussion. But any items that have not yet had a hearing will automatically be triggered by a card from the public, so feel free to fill out the speaker cards here or in Van Nuys and San Pedro, hand that to the city staff or the sergeant-at-arms, and we'll be sure to get that in the mix. Finally, we do have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. And if you'd like to be heard in that, please fill out a speaker card and put Public Comment in upper right corner and we'll be more than happy to hear your thoughts today. Again, thank you to those council members who are here on time. Councilmembers Cardenas, Labange, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Wesson, and Zine. We are still awaiting Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Coretz, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Alakon. As soon as we get two more members, we will begin the meeting. If we fail to reach a quorum, we will have to cancel for lack of a quorum at 10:15. Thank you to the public for your patience and we ask those council members to join us as soon as possible out of respect to the public. Thank you. We're awaiting Mr. Alakon and Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coretz, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry. We are still awaiting Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Alakon. As soon as we get two more members, we will begin the meeting. If we fail to reach a quorum, we will have to cancel for lack of a quorum at 10:15. Thank you to the public for your patience and we ask those council members to join us as soon as possible out of respect to the public. Thank you. We're awaiting Mr. Alakon and Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coretz, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Parks, and We are awaiting Mr. Alakon and Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coretz, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry. We have a quorum now. Madam Clerk, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Coretz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Smith seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Committory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Labange seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. If, today is Tuesday and we do salute the flag, so if I could ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Smith, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, everyone, please rise. Place your hand up high and repeat with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now run through today's agenda. If I could direct your attention, colleagues, to any items you wish to call special, we'll take up the items before us. First item, please.
Item number one is an item known for public carrying, however, there has been a request to refer this item back to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, is there any objection? All right. Go ahead and return that to Public Safety. Next items, please.
Items two and three are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. Anybody from the council wishing to call either of these two special, number two and three? If not, number two and three, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items four through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There is also a request to continue item nine to April 19th.
Is there any objection to continuing that to the 19th of April, number nine? If not, we'll go ahead and do that. We have cards on, which items on these?
Items five, eight, and 12.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. And Mr. Rosenthal?
Special to lead that off. And 10, I just want to amend 10 to extend it from two months to three months. It's just a friendly amendment to a motion.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll add that, number 10, Mr. Cardenas?
12 special.
Okay. Mr. Labange?
Some corrections on verbiage, streets instead of avenues, et cetera. Item number four.
Okay, we're going to hold four on the desk till we have 12 members. That is an ordinance, so we'll make that correction as well. If there are no cards on the remaining items, let's go ahead and close those and please, close the public hearings on those and please open the roll on the balance. Oh, sorry, Mr. Parks?
Yes, number 13, could we have special and have it out of order? We have some police personnel here.
Okay, we'll call 13 special. And let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. And we'll hold number 15 until we have 12 members. We're still awaiting councilmembers Alakon, Weezer, Coretz, Krikorian, and Perry.
We're going to call 15 special.
Yeah, we're going to hold that. It's an ordinance and we're awaiting a quorum. Okay, let's go ahead. Mr. Parks, if you'd like to take 13 out of order?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Could I have Detective Diaz come up? Our colleagues, we have today a very serious incident that occurred in the 8th District in which we've asked Detective Michelle Diaz to give us some overview of it. It's a $75,000 reward for three victims of some very serious injuries.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'd like to take the opportunity first of all to thank you for hearing me this morning. On March 7th, 2011, at approximately 12:50 hours, victims Lynette Warren, a 29-year-old female, Edward Dent, a 31-year-old male, and Donna Allen, a 34-year-old female, were in the rear yard of 2020 West Vernon. This location is an adult daycare center for the mentally challenged. Unknown suspects standing on the northwest corner of Vernon and Van Ness Avenue shot at two male blacks who were walking on the south side of Vernon and Van Ness. The intended targets ran east on the south side of Vernon out of harm's way. Warren, excuse me, Warren Dent and Allen were all struck by gunfire. The suspects ran to an awaiting vehicle parked on the northwest corner of Vernon and Van Ness, entered the rear passenger and driver's side, and fled south on Van Ness. All three victims are mentally challenged and require constant care and supervision. This was a census shooting where three individuals who were not only innocent but mentally challenged were struck by stray rounds. Victim Warren, she's a mother of four children and she's mentally challenged, but she worked at this daycare center. Victim two, Mr. Dent, who I had the opportunity to meet, he sustained a gunshot wound to the right side of his cheek and his jaw. He required 10 staples to close his, his face. Victim three, Ms. Allen, 34-year-old female, she sustained a graze to the left side of her head. She suffers from cerebral palsy. To date, I have no leads on this investigation and I'm requesting the public's assistance on, in any information that will lead me to solve this case and put these shooters behind bars.
Detective, could you give your phone number for contact?
Yes, sir. You can contact me at area code 213. I'm at 77th Division Crimes Against Person, 213-473-4861.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I'd ask for an aye vote on this issue. We have three very innocent victims who became a victim of gunfire and all three are seriously injured. In addition to that, they are also mentally challenged, which adds even more to the significance of this issue. We have a $75,000 reward because of the three victims, multiple victims of very serious crimes, so we'd ask for an aye vote on this issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. If no other members wish to be heard on this item, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is passed unanimously. We'll send that forth with without objection. Thank you, detective. We'll see if we can get some, some public leads for you on that. That'll take us, actually, let's take item four since we do have 12 members now. Can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Now we'll go to our general public comment and Anthony Acevedo is our first speaker. After that will be John Walsh.
Good morning. Good morning. Hi, my name is Anthony Acevedo and I'm with the Plumbers Local 78 and I've been unemployed for about six months now. And I'm in support of the football stadium that you have been considering. If this project is approved, this would mean that I can get back to work, I'd be able to make my mortgage payments without worry, and also continue to provide for my family. I have three children and it's kind of tough out there. And we are surviving on a daily and that's, that's how we're moving along. So again, the approval of this project would definitely help myself, not only that, but others that are out of work and we'd greatly appreciate the consideration. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Acevedo. John Walsh will be our next speaker, then Shamari Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning. John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. 100,000 successful cell requests a month. I'm here to launch a tourist boycott. I am saying to the entire world, do not visit Dodger Stadium. Many of the surveillance cameras are not working. Since when Rupert Murdoch and before him, the O'Malley family had very good security there, since the McCourts took over, they have lowered security. As a result, Brian Stowe, a paramedic from the Bay Area, was nearly beaten to death. Is there any reward from the people up here? No. Only Mike Antonovich has made an award. We're asking now at this meeting and it's under a special rule, emergency rule, a $100,000 reward for information leading to the arrest of the people who attempted to murder a San Francisco fan. We are also asking for a nationwide boycott among baseball fans of the Dodgers. If you have ever visited or if you have ever lived in the Bay Area, do not go, do not see the Dodgers play. The only way, the McCourts are spending their money on their divorce proceedings rather than spending it in a stadium that has demarcated gang territory. One gang will tell you they can't go into this section. And when the mayor shows up, and he shows up for nothing except photos, he has 50 to 60 LAPD around him. But when you show up, you get nothing. They have no interest in us, these people up here. HollywoodHighlands.org, you are killing us at Dodger Stadium. Boycott them!
Thank you. And about five minutes ago, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Reyes came up and does have a reward motion he is introducing today. Shamari Davis is our next speaker. Sean Murphy will follow.
Good morning, President Garcetti and council members. Thank you for having me. My name is Shamari Davis. I'm a business representative for IBEW Local 11 Electrician Julian. And I just want to express my deep appreciation for all of your work here in the city of L.A. on approving the Worcester Grand redevelopment and hopefully this can go forward and we want to support Farmers Field. We want to be able to create those jobs for all of our members. We have about almost 1,100 members out of work. And we know that it's very vital, not only to the downtown revitalization of L.A., but it's also vital to the sustainability of Los Angeles. So we get behind projects because we know the responsible projects. We don't just get behind them just because... And I just want to express my deep appreciation for all of your work here in the city of L.A. on approving the Worcester Grand redevelopment. And hopefully, this can go forward and we want to support Farmers Field. We want to be able to create those jobs for all of our members. We have about almost eleven hundred members out of work. And we know that it's very vital, not only to the downtown revitalization of L.A., but it's also vital to the sustainability of Los Angeles. So we get behind projects because we know they're responsible projects. We don't just get behind them just because we want to build. We love this city. We think it's the greatest city in the United States and we want to make it beautiful, with light, because we're electricians. So please get behind Farmers Field. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Shamari. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange for an introduction as Mr. Sean Murphy comes forward.
Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti, who represents the Thirteenth District in many good parts of Silver Lake, and the Fourth District in Silver Lake. I want a special welcome to the fifth grade class of Ivanhoe Elementary School. Please stand and be recognized. Ms. Kim Jones, a great teacher, and Ms. Carlos Esteban, another great teacher. I also want to say, members, Ms. Jones lives in the district. And years ago, in two thousand and one, when I knocked her on her door for a vote, her dog came out and bit me, but I got the vote. So thank you, Kim. The dog was licensed and it was good dog. Thank you, Kim Jones. Thank you, Carlos Esteban. Thank you, fifth graders from Ivanhoe Elementary School, Silver Lake.
Thank you very much and welcome to Ivanhoe. Mr. Sean Murphy is our next speaker, then Phil Stordi will follow. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President and City Council. I'd like to say hello to the new madam clerk. Hello. Rain's coming back again. I'm not looking forward to the rainy, the rain coming back because the streets, every time it rains and every time it rains here, the streets get flooded. Especially, I'll tell you the worst intersection, it's like a shimmering park. That intersection needs to be, needs, needs a new storm drain. I'm sorry. I tried to cross the street when we had the L.A. Marathon, I couldn't get across. We need new storm drains. We need new storm drains. Got to do something about that. And also, I want to let my fans know that my birthday's coming up, Easter Sunday. I'm glad we're getting a new football stadium, a Dodger Stadium, but I have a question for the city council. When are we going to get our fair share? I live in the, when are we going to get our fair share of the Laurel rebuilding of the Laurel Canyon Plaza? We've been waiting for, for years now. We should get our fair share of the Laurel Canyon Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Phil Stordi. After that is Daniel Weisman. Good morning.
Good morning. Phil Stordi, the Amelicious Movement. The Daily News this morning carried an article about closing the mission shelter to the public or to animal services functions, annually holding it open as an adoption facility. I do not think this is a good idea. Increasingly, nonprofit, private sector organizations run as businesses, they take in billions of dollars, millions of dollars in donations and thus that. And we run our city shelters as a charity. We would be renting this out for, I'm sure, a dollar a year. We would be paying maintenance. Our staff will have to prepare the animals that go there. They will be the most adoptable animals in the city, called out and taken to that far location away from the shelters where they could be adopted out to the public in that area. And what would be the population? Fifty to a hundred dogs? We will have to maintain this entire facility still as a city function for a dollar a year. So we need to remember that when we're thinking about cost effectiveness. What will happen is the two to three hundred dollar, two to three hundred evidence animals and nursing moms that are now held there, they will have to be taken from that facility and we will either have to euthanize adoptable animals or euthanize them in order to have room at our other shelters for the animals that are coming in. No public functions or services will be offered to the public. We have to remember that. People in the valley will expect to be able to bring their animals there or to get licensing. It will not be available. Clinico, which is down at the harbor, has not even been able to meet their basic commitments and the city is having to subsidize them by bringing animals from other shelters, hundreds of miles of transportation. There's no reason to believe that a nonprofit can function at a market level and stay viable unless the city is subsidizing them. We need to accept that and realize that we're not really having any particular benefit to the public or the community by turning this over to someone else.
Thank you. Daniel Weisman is our next speaker. After that is Arminak Norjanian.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. I'm delighted to see that all fifteen members of the council are present today. And I'm even more delighted to see my elementary school represented here. I went to Ivanhoe. All right? You guys are great. Tom didn't, but I did. Tom went to Marshall, that's another story. Anyway, when you reach a certain age, I think you're entitled to be a historian. And I've reached that age, I hope. And this is a historic day. This is the first day that the neighborhood councils have been asked to give a formal and rather extensive presentation to you, our city council members. We've been asking for a seat at the table for a long time and we're delighted that we're going to be here. You're going to hear a lot from us in the formal presentation, but I just wanted to accent the historic nature of this. And I hope this is the beginning of many collaborations. It certainly has to be. The budget deficit is the overriding issue of our time and we look forward to working with you on it. Thank you very much. You have two handouts. I hope that you at least have a chance to glance at them so that when we come before you in item number five, which is about to come up, you'll start having some familiarity and we'll go from there. Thank you again. Thank you to all members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Arminak Norjanian is our next speaker and our final speaker for general public comment. Good morning.
Respectable city council members, you fellow Angelinos, actually, I believe that, in my opinion, that corrupt officials should be ousted. And the slogan of American Revolution is to oust corrupt incumbents and corrupt officials. I believe that where I live in South Central area, where roads are not paved and there are lots of large cracks and potholes in the South Central area. And when I called three one one Department of City, Department of Transportation, City Department of, Los Angeles City Department of Transportation, we never fixed those potholes, we never fixed those cracks in that spot. Instead, there is a wasteful spending of money, you know, on those wages of city council members. Like they want to rake in one hundred seventeen thousand dollars, which is corruption. If liberal candidates offer to cut down those wages in fifty percent, you give that money to poor city workers, to increase their salaries. Where might be social justice, our will be have no social peace, our will be more riots, more assassinations and more strikes, you know, you'll see in the city. In the second, there is a problem with turning the city into a haven for illegal dope dealing. Those Hollywood area, illegal marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries violate federal control subsidy act adopted by U.S. Congress in nineteen seventy-four. It should be closed down. And the city does nothing, you know, city police does nothing to close down those illegal dope deals in spite of where is ripping off Los Angeles residents. We charge about two hundred per one ounce of dope and then rip off Los Angeles residents and we prey on poor and sick Los Angelinos and the city council members do nothing to stop them. And I believe that corrupt city council members should resign.
Thank you, Mr. Norjanian. Dr. Clyde Williams is our last speaker.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four one one five Barre Road, El Sreno, Northeast L.A. Thank you for the Budget Committee meeting last night in Glassell Park and the CAO's presentation regarding the future of Los Angeles. You should tell the fire department that you'll be coming back to them because they just considered their budget and they said, this is a budget that they won't ask for anything more. And I said, don't you believe it? But anyway, real announcement, tonight in Laconia de Flint Ridge, the SR seven ten scoping session will be held. Again, this is a project where the study area is a hundred square miles, a hundred square miles, of which about a third of it's in Los Angeles. However, they have no project. They want the community to propose alternatives. Then they will consider them sometime later on. Why? Because they don't want to provide any information. It's a snow job, a real snow job, so that people get confused easily, there's nothing to focus on, and they're trying to slip it by us. We're trying not to allow that. Tomorrow night in Highland Park, there will also be a scoping session for the SR seven ten. And thank you, Mr. Weezer, for arranging that one. We got two rather than, well, almost nine. A lot of the neighborhood councils are actually larger than many of the cities that were given preference. So what we would like to do is make sure that the Department of Public Works and the Department of Transportation reflects your resolution to prohibit any surface construction in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the public comment on items eight and twelve now. John Walsh, if you'd like, come on, number eight.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I. And if you want to email us, Hollywood Dems, the E M S at gmail dot com. Over one hundred thousand successful server requests a month. I've shown our analytics, our GoDaddy analytics to the president here. What we have here is the certified results of the election. Now, I believe under thirteen percent of the registered voters actually voted. So it didn't give you a really good feel for the city. I think Ron Kay and his organization, Clean Sweep, did an excellent job. And incidentally, in the elections, there, some people said, no runoffs. Oh, no, there are two runoffs. Bennett Kaiser is running for, in a runoff, city election for, for a school board. It's important that we vote for him. And also for the much discredited College District, Lydia Gutierrez, Sylvia Gutierrez is running. And also, you are certifying the vote. We expect that Bennett Kaiser received an enormous amount of money from our union, UTLA, and why not? Today, I would say that the gang members who beat and almost killed Stowe in Dodger Stadium have, get treated better in the L.A. Times than teachers. We all know teachers are evil, they're white, they're lazy, and they should be gotten rid of, and there's not one of you that will deny that. HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm a teacher.
Go ahead and prepare the roll on item number eight and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
As approved. On item twelve, Judy Mancuso, if you want to come forward. Judy, we'll go forth with on eight. Is Judy Mancuso here? There she is, come in. And then Ed Buck.
Hi, I'm here to ask your support today for Assembly Bill AB six ten. And it is, my name is Judy Mancuso and I'm a public member of the California Veterinary Medical Board. I'm also the president of the California Spay and Neuter License Plate Fund and the president of Social Compassion and Legislation that is sponsoring AB six ten. Jose Solario is the author. This bill will reduce the number of pre-orders needed for specialty license plate programs from seventy-five hundred to twenty-five hundred. It maintains a sponsoring agency. We did have a full graphic in the bill to bring back a full graphic on the plate, which has, which is going to be polled. We took an amendment yesterday in the Transportation Committee where the vote was fourteen to zero in the Assembly Transportation Committee. So we did get bipartisan support, which was awesome. So it will be moving forward without the full graphic due to the CHP not wanting to bring back the full graphic. So we're here to urge your support and vote today for AB six ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Buck will follow, then John Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning. Ed Buck, I'm a board member with Social Compassion and Legislation and a co-founder of Southern California Golden River Rescue. I very much like to urge your support of this bill. One of the realities is that this bill will bring much-needed revenue to the city of Los Angeles, especially to the underserved areas in the city of Los Angeles. When the revenue stream begins, the revenue will be directed, for instance, to spay and neuter programs in South Central where they're very much needed, spay and neuter programs in North Hollywood. So it is in certainly the interest of the city to promote this bill, to see it passed. Please, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. John Walsh is our last speaker on item twelve.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We put up a new, new post last week. And we, on this issue, which is license plates, we'd like to support this issue. We think that we want to get these issues out of the way. So for identification purposes, John Walsh, spearhead of the national boycott the Dodgers games all over America until they improve security at Chavez Ravine, which they stole from the Mexican-Americans to begin with and gave it to the Irish-Americans, Mr. McCourt, who is, and Mr. McCourt, if he were here, you'd all be in his palm, palm of his hand. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Just a reminder, we're talking about, I mean, license plates here. Can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Cardenas had called that special. Let's reconsider that because I believe he wanted to say something on that. Sorry about that. Please open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
My apologies. Mr. Cardenas?
I just wanted to thank all the supporters who brought this this far. It's really good to see and know that the Transportation Committee on a bipartisan vote went ahead and voted for it fourteen to zero. That means that it has tremendous support from the legislature. And basically, this is a lifesaver of an issue, but also it's a cost saver as well. It's not about generating more money, but primarily it's about making sure that we don't have to waste money euthanizing animals in California. So that's what it's really about. Some people look at this as a money issue. I look at it as a life-saving issue. And this is just the inappropriate and proper thing for us to embark on here in California, to do something simple, like making sure that people have available to them at their costs, at their expense, to contribute to this solution. And this little artwork here, I'm surprised to hear, I didn't know actor Pierce Brosnan was, was an artist, but apparently he is. It looks pretty cool. And we have a purple dog and a yellow and orange cat. And it's something, again, that is really cute, but beyond that, it's something that will provide life-saving dollars to make sure that we at the local government level don't have to euthanize animals. What it means is the more people spay and neuter, the less animals that have to be killed. Overpopulation is an issue throughout this country, actually throughout the world, but we need to be leaders in California and make sure that we support this resolution that supports the legislation by Solario and let them know that the largest city in California says, please pass this, keep it going. Hopefully, we'll get unanimous support all the way through and the governor's signature. And I want to thank the departments for working with all of the communities throughout California to make sure that this logical, simple issue is actually provided to the people of California so we can pay for our license plates to show the world and our neighbors that we support spay and neutering, we support the no-kill efforts of the city of L.A. and all communities who want to reach it. This is one big giant step in that direction. So once again, I want to thank all the supporters and also thank Assembly Member Solario for his leadership.
Mr. Kretz.
Actually, I think Councilmember Cardenas said most of what I wanted to say. I want to thank Ed Buck and Judy Mancuso and all the other folks that moved this forward. We're trying every angle we can to have our shelter system move to a life-saving, no-kill system. And by generating the dollars that we generate for spay and neuter, we save our costs in terms of what we have to pay for housing and more importantly, for euthanizing animals. And we take a significant step forward towards the day when we don't kill a very high percentage of cats and dogs in the city and actually achieve a no-kill. of cats and dogs in the city, and actually achieve a no-kill shelter status. So, we appreciate everyone's good work on this, and it's another step in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Carruthers. With that, we'll take the vote again. If we can prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. If we can take up item five next, and I'd like to recognize the Chair first, and then Mr. Rosenthal, who called it special, Mr. Kukorian, on item number five.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the representatives of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates come forward, and as they come forward, I just want to say that, since the Neighborhood Council movement was created about a decade ago, one of the things that I think the city has not taken advantage of to maximum effect is drawing upon the Neighborhood Council, Neighborhood Council movement, as a source for policy advice to this council. And this, the report that we're about to hear is an example of why I think it's beneficial to have Neighborhood Councils that represent every community in this city, be able, to be able to bring independent eyes forward, and to analyze difficult issues in a way that might be a little bit different than usually happens in this building. And so, what you're about to hear is a presentation that's been the cumulative work of 23 members of the Budget Advocates Committee, who've worked for, for a great deal of time on suggestions that will help the city generate revenue, increase efficiencies, make structural changes, and reduce expenses. And so, I'm pleased to welcome them here, thank them very much for the extensive work that they've done on this project, and also to note that the complete report will be available, I'm sure, many places, but I do want to note that it's available on my policy blog at CD2policy.blogspot.com. The complete report will be, is already available to the public. So, with that, I'd like to welcome the advocates, and thank them very much for their work on this.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, Councilmembers, thank you all for having us here today and taking our report under consideration. My name is Jay Handel. I chair the Budget Advocates for the citywide and Neighborhood Council system. I'd like to take one moment and ask each of the people at the table to just introduce themselves for the record.
I'm Daniel Wiseman, I'm the secretary. I'm Daniel Wiseman, Secretary of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates.
Ginger Damon at Water Village Neighborhood Council.
Heinrich Keifer, Co-Chair of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates, Astoria, Collin Park, Eagle Rock, LA 32.
I'm David Crew from the Westwood Neighborhood Council.
A little background to the work that we've done. Back in November, the Budget Advocates were elected by their peers throughout the city, from each planning district. There are Neighborhood Council members who represent every single planning district in this area. This year, being the second year that I've been involved, we took a different tact to how we would approach the Budget Advocates. Typically, in the past, the Budget Advocates' job was to look at the mayor's survey and make recommendations based on those responses we got in the survey. We felt this year that the budget situation, the crisis, was much deeper, much broader, and demanded much more work from us. So what we did was, we took our 23 committee members and alternates, and divided up into six committees. Those six committees met with organized labor, met with department heads, general managers, staff, anybody and everybody that we were able to get a meeting with, to dig deep into things that would tell us why the problems are the way they are today, and how they felt they could be fixed. Because in the end, it's all of us who, it's in the shared pain, it's all of us who have to share that pain. So the name of our report is very fitting. It's called Saving Jobs, Saving Services. We looked at the fact that it's furloughing people to balance the budget, did nothing more than take away our services as citizens. We continue to pay for services that are not rendered. So there was a problem that we needed to dig into. And the problem was, obviously, structural. It's much deeper than just furlough for a short period of time. So if you, if you go through the White Paper, you will see that, in our deliberations, we spoke to, again, going into the efficiency recommendations. And I'm sure everybody has read the paper, and hopefully, has questions for us. But we looked at efficiencies. We looked at $300 million being written off in the last 24 months, of fees that could not be collected, and taxes that could not be collected. We spoke to department heads to find out what are the delinquent accounts we have in this city. And to this day, no one can tell us exactly what the delinquencies are in this city, overall, because the system is broken. The system does not work the way it's set up. Our permits and licensing for businesses is a failed system. We have, I myself am a hearing examiner for the Police Commission. I am one who would hear items such as parking lot operators who don't pay their bills, who don't file on time. When you look at the amount of money that has not been collected, just in parking lot operations, it tells you that the system is not working. We, we have three different remedies for trying to do collections, and it takes three years to get it to a city attorney to prosecute it. It just makes no sense. In my personal life, I've run a $90 million business. I would not wait three years to collect a debt. It makes no sense. And I would certainly not issue a permit to operate that I could not suspend and could not revoke. So in our recommendations, probably one of our master recommendations, that you could and should act on very quickly, is an overhaul of the business permit system. The ordinance that created that system should be revoked. You should implement a new permit system. You should implement a permits and licensing board that would hear, after 30 days delinquency, anybody that was brought in front of them, and you could suspend that permit on the spot. You should be able to have at that table Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, little cities do it, it's called the Boards of Permits and Licensing. And it ends these delinquencies immediately, and it brings all three of the hearing jurisdictions together in one board at one time, as opposed to now, where a department tries to collect it, and they may have a business permit and a police permit. So the business permit tries to collect it, at some point, it gets to the Police Commission for CID to review it, and ultimately, hold a hearing down the line, and eventually, to a city attorney to prosecute it. If the city attorney and everybody was at the same Board of Permits and Licensing, this would be a very simple task to collect our money, and stop those scofflaws who do not pay the city, that cost us jobs and cost us services. It all comes back to costing us jobs and costing us services. That, by itself, is a major recommendation from this committee. It's a major overhaul, it could be implemented, very quickly by this board, by this, by this council, if the political will is there to make those changes and make it happen. In our paper, we looked at combining departments. We looked at the fact we have so many police departments, some with very few members, but very big hierarchy. It just makes no sense. You know, this city has grown too big, too fast, and there's too much expense. The reality is, our revenues have stayed relatively flat over the years, but our expenses have risen tremendously. Yes, it's in salaries. Yes, it's in health care. Yes, it's in pensions. But it's also in inefficiencies. And the inefficiencies, the inability to collect, the inability to combine departments, the inability to bring people together and merge those services and save those top dollars down, is what's costing us jobs and services. So our recommendations in the paper is to take a very good, hard look at many of these departments, okay, and ensure that they are put together. We looked at issues like the P3. The P3 was a perfect example of really poor planning, because balancing a budget on dollars that have never even been RFP'd is not something you'd see in any real business. So this is, this is, as a business, a failed model of how to run a business efficiently and economically. And plugging numbers in that you don't even have numbers for is fictitiously balancing the budget, which ultimately, again, costs somebody furlough days and costs somebody Revenue generation. We, we went through the CORE report. You know, we're very concerned that, you know, CORE was established, CORE did an absolutely great job in pulling together items, that unfortunately, most of which has never been acted on. When we're in a fiscal crisis, you would think that the first thing that would be on everybody's mind would be finding CORE efficiencies and acting on them. Besides CORE, when we met with the Controller's Office, we were given over 38 different audits that had been done in the last year, that had never been acted on by council, at which the Controller's Office estimates would have been about a $300 million savings had they've been acted on. So we, as citizens, look and see $300 million not collected. We see $300 million in efficiencies not acted on. We see $46 million in housing money. We see inefficiencies where we lay people off, but we end up costing us more money in services in departments. And we, we just hone in on the fact that we're losing money that we already have. So in the end, our recommendation is really clear. For revenue generation, the first place to look is where we've already generated it, but we don't collect it. Instead of going out, ShopLA is a great program, it was done in other cities 10 years ago. It's a terrific program if we educate our people correctly. But the fact of the matter is, we are not collecting the money that's due us now, and that's what's hurting us the most, and it's costing us the most in services. The reduction in expenses, you know, we talked, I touched a little bit on merging departments. To be quite frank, and last night at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, our advocates' position was made public on the proposed coalition agreement with the city. And the Budget Advocates have reviewed it very carefully, item by item. And the Budget Advocates, to just make it very simple at the end, we urge you to reject the proposed agreement, because it does not fit that which we have regarded as our core principles, which is increase efficiency, generate revenue, structural changes, and reducing expenses. This agreement shows us money being kicked down the road again. When we met with the CAO's office, we asked a very specific question. For the $200 million in savings for now, how are we budgeting that for the future? And the answer was, well, we have to budget it year by year. We're already budgeting deficits year by year by year going forward. So we're not cutting the expenses, we are deferring the expenses. And deferring expenses just not, does not work. It will not fix the problem. It may fix it for everybody who wants to be out of here in four years, but it doesn't fix it for us, the citizens, in the long run. And your responsibility is to fix the problem, not kick down the problem. So for that reason, we have rejected and asked you to reject that proposal, and to get the unions and the city to sit down for a long-term fix of the problem. That being said, the other, the other long line in our tagline is, this has to be the end of the can't-do era. Because all we hear is, well, we can't do this, well, we can't do that, well, they won't let us do that, or we're constrained by that. I think we're past that. I, I think everybody understands, I think the unions understand at this point, that the contracts are only as good as the budget year it's signed in, and it seems that every two years, we come back for, for contract changes. And the union people are at the point where they don't believe in contracts when they get them. A handshake is no longer a handshake. We, the citizens, don't believe that we're going to get what we've been promised for the monies that we've paid. So I think the era of can't-do has to end, and it has to end on both sides. It has to end on the city negotiating side, and it has to end on the union side. Because now's the time for everyone to have to come together, if we're going to make this city, as that electrical union guy said, the greatest city in the United States of America. And it's only going to, it's going to be up to you guys to make that happen. We spoke with the pension people. There is an absolute philosophical difference when we meet with the heads of lasers, and then we meet with the, the people, the, our people, you know, the citizens, and we talk about how the pension system is set up, and, and those pension reforms that really have to happen. And, and we are recommending in our White Paper that this council put together a Blue Ribbon Committee of, of citizens to sit down and really look at the pension problem, and try and come up with some ideas that will bring a structural change and fix, that the unions can accept, that the city can accept, the workers can accept, that will make everybody realize that in the long run, we will have a pension system that is sustainable, as opposed to what we have now. And the last part of our report, being very Neighborhood Council geared, is about Neighborhood Council funding. We all realize that sharing the pain is important. You know, Neighborhood Councils have shared that pain in the past as well. We have outlined a budget for the Neighborhood Councils themselves, to show that taking a percentage away of Neighborhood Council money would be a huge error, but there are ways to save money, at the same time, more money, quite frankly, than a $5,000 cut, that would make sense in the system itself, and would make sense for the city, and would show that Neighborhood Councils are sharing that pain. Having said that, I would like to open it up to the council, and any, any questions council may have of us.
Thank you. We have, Mr. Rosenthal is our next speaker, called a special, and then Mr. Zine will follow after that.
Good morning. First thing, I want to say, this is a historic moment. As you know, I moved that motion through the process to make this happen, and I thank Mr. Kukorian's leadership with the Neighborhood Councils. I believe in Neighborhood Councils, it's the first part of democracy. And for you to be sitting right now in, in the well here, rather than over there, tells you the significance and importance that we take seriously the Budget Advocates and the Neighborhood Councils. I know my colleagues and I feel, feel the same way. The one thing I just wanted to put on the record a little bit, was when you talked about the uncollectible debt out there. Half of that money is uncollectible, just can't be done. We've been hammering at it for years and years and years. And so, that is one that we need to either parse out and explain to you, somebody from, from the staff, Miguel Santana, can explain to you why it's uncollectible. I mean, we've tried. It is not just sitting there for us to grab. I just want, and he'll do that when he responds to, to what you have, what that is all about. But I really appreciate you coming here and doing this. We have not seen the mayor's budget, which comes out on April 20th. We, as a city, will react. But one of the conversations, Jay, you and I have had, is about what I think is a positive move, when the Coalition of Unions talked about paying 4% into health care, and going from 6% on their pensions to 11%. To me, that was a dramatic move and shift. That saves us $300 million, of which 68 million will happen in this particular budget cycle. And I can actually see some light in this budget process that we didn't have ever before. So there is that sensibility. I'd like your reaction to that, about what took place with the leadership of this council and the mayor on that issue.
Well, you know, we understand that it's very difficult to get anyone to move when they're contractually not obligated, and we certainly understand that. We, we have concerns, especially in the health care end of, of the contribution, because what we have been told, what we have been advised, is that what this will do is obligate the city forever to the higher rate, and will ultimately end up costing the city money down the line. It, it contractually obligates the city to something it's not obligated to now.
And I'd like Miguel to answer that one as well, when he comes up, just for the record.
Yeah. And, and so, that, that was a major concern for us, absolutely. You know, the, the other concern, the big concern, quite frankly, is, you know, when we're talking about deferring payroll, and you're talking about in two or three years, having to come up with the money that we're already projecting a huge deficit for, and the answer continues to be, but we know the economy will be better. And that's like saying, let's take
And that's like saying, let's take $53 million from the P3s. Okay, let's do it, and then we'll vote on it, and then we'll do an RFP and see if it'll happen. You know, it's hoping that something is going to change.
Here, my last question is, do you see any new revenue streams that we should be developing or, or looking at?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, uh, in fact, I received an email yesterday from someone in Wreckin' Parks, a leader in Wreckin' Parks, who gave me seven very defined ways just for Wreckin' Parks to bring in more revenues. You know, one of the things we do is, we cut down staff because we have to cut down hours because we have to cut down payroll. But then you have people coming into the parks and not pulling permits for the things they should be pulling permits for.
Right.
And that's why we're losing staff, because we're losing that revenue. But the biggest revenue generator will be collecting the money that's outstanding. And quite frankly, we went through with the CAO and we went through with the Office of Finance how the collection process works. And as a business person, I can tell you that when the department tries to collect it themselves for six or seven months, and then gives it to a collection agency, a primary collection agency for twelve months, and then a secondary collection agency for nine months, and then to the city attorney, absolutely, they're uncollectible. In my business, it would be ninety days is my contract with my collection agent, and then it goes to suit.
Okay. Well, let's just hold that point for, for the series, but I'd love to hear from other members of the panel before we go into our response and, and other colleagues speaking.
I'd like to comment on the revenue generators. If you look at our document, under revenue generators, it clearly describes implement the city attorney's administrative code enforcement, that's the ACE program, hire qualified parking lot, commercial parking lot operators to run the city's parking facilities, enforce current permit fee structure for city-owned operated facilities such as parks, implement a two-tier fee system for many city services, improve support for business growth, expand tax relief incentives, kind of a double-edged sword, but encourage occupancy of distressed or vacant commercial property for both large and small business owners, reactivate the mayor's business development deputies, encourage bids to inventory all vacant ground-level commercial space and target for infill. You know, business revenue, sales taxes, what's really important. I, I dare say that I don't see a lot of activity sometimes coming from our local elected officials in regards to helping small business community and bringing in. You see a little bit, but we need more. Support the CAO's, CAO's effort to study Los Angeles-specific branding opportunities, immediately enacting ordinance, and this veterinarian one is on the, was on the agenda today, uh, to check for proper licensing when animals come into their veterinary facilities, create some incentive for them to actually help with licensing, create corporate sponsorship options to help the, the city services and maintain facilities in need, and then finally promote LA, Shop L.A. campaign. So those are the ones that we've listed in front of you. We have some references there. Please take a look at them. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl raised two issues, both of which I'd like to respond to. Number one, the issue of the collections. We have had great difficulty in finding out how much is billed, so how much is collected. The controller's data were 2007, 2008, 2008, 2009. Well, we're three years past that. One of the items that came up last night is we need some help, and we'll need some help from your support systems, I hope, to be able to access these data. Because while the old uncollectibles are uncollectible, they are the evidence of what we should be looking at to be sure we collect what will be due
In a timely fashion.
In next year and subsequent years. The ACE program is probably one of the good solutions that we believe would, would help. And you've just gone through an item here for the animal, dog, dog and cat licenses that actually itemizes what I have not been able to find so far and what none of us have found. That is, how much would those penalties be? What we need to know, then, is how many such incidents might occur. Then we can put it into a true collection system that'll work. The other issue you brought up was the 4% increase in the coalition members' contribution to their, uh, health plan. Whether 4% is enough to, to fully fund the healthcare for those individuals in that two-party system, it's a little more detail is necessary, but is, is questionable. But the coalition people are only fourteen hundred and fifty, uh, fourteen thousand five hundred of our 32,000 employees. The other employees, most of which are already maxed out and are not, don't have 4% more to give to get to that 11% number. The fire and police are already at 10%, or will be in July 1st.
I'm just sorry, you confuse it. The 4% has to do with healthcare. The other one is pension from 6% to 11%.
Right.
But, but this is a huge, huge step. I mean, I am so happy that the coalition worked with the city. It was an amazing new day. It's a new paradigm, I think, and I think our city is setting an example for the nation that we can work with labor in a positive way, so we both benefit from it.
Mr. Rosendahl, we have to move on to the next person in the queue. So if you want to press your button again?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr., we're five minutes over. Uh, Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, congratulations for your tenacity, your participation. You got paid zero for the dedication to this. Uh, is the mother of the charter reform, Janice Hahn, and I was also on that commission. We envisioned that neighborhood councils would do something like this, and it's taken ten years to finally bring it to fruition where it's actually in a productive fashion. So I want to congratulate you on that. $300 million. If we were a private business, we would have been bankrupt a long time ago. And what you're hitting on is issues that have been affecting the city for a long, long time. Uh, we will be going through these issues with the colleagues, making motions, making changes. I know conversation with the controller. She's very frustrated with a lot of things that need to be done, aren't being done. I spoke to some private ambulance owners, and I said, you transport for the county of Los Angeles. The county sends out the firefighters, but transportation's done by private ambulance. I said, how do you folks stay in business? Because we don't collect the money. We try. We send a bill, nothing happens. We put a lien, we send them a letter, we put a lien, and we move forward with it. That's how they stay in business. And I think we've been negligent for too many years and just writing off. If you say we write off $300 million, $400 million, we just write it off. It's like, we, we don't really care about it, and we need to care about it. And the dysfunctional aspect is finally coming to the public arena where this council wants to make it work, along with the neighborhood councils. And I think when you talk about services, every time a city employee leaves, that's another service that's being cut, whether it's sanitation or any of the other critical services. We always focus on police and fire, but there's so many other services that we need to provide. So I want to congratulate you on that. It's an in-depth report, a lot of information. I know you have a police lieutenant as a representative here, so he sees it from the law enforcement perspective. You sit on the Board of Rights, the doctor, and this group really has taken the core of what needs to change. And hopefully, we will have the courage to make those changes and move forward to make it a better Los Angeles, so we can provide those services. Again, I want to congratulate you on bringing this forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti.
Madam President, and thank you again for this amazing and historic moment. Thank you for the hard work that you put into this as well, and thank you for raising the bar. It's not enough to be consulted in the way that we just ask you, answer these five questions. You've gone above and beyond that and actually done work that I think is great. It builds on also, not only the neighborhood councils, but our city workers, our business organizations are all part of, I think, a city final looking at this budget as our budget, not something that City Hall creates, but something that affects all of the people. And you certainly underscored that as well. Appreciate the, the framework that you put in here as well, and I think that this has been a good framework that our CAO has been looking at and the council has been looking at. The, I think it's been said, and we'll see what happens with the, with the coalition deal, and I appreciated you all being in at Glassell Park last night. I know we had the chance to talk about it. But I do think that on the last two, structural changes and reducing expenses, any permanent deal, and just, I think maybe, and we can have the CAO talk about it a little bit later, but because this does freeze healthcare costs as well moving forward. So it has that as part of the deal. That is a very, very important piece. We saw pension reform as something critical. We passed something with our sworn folks, but we know that pension reform doesn't get you much with current employees, doesn't get you almost anything, especially when we're not hiring. What this does, healthcare is one of the things I focused on as much as pensions, because it has tripled, while pensions have gone up at a slower rate. It has tripled in the last decade. That's before we do the next five years. And until we get that under control, I know we have a doctor here at the table, it is one of the most critical pieces for us to do. So, you know, let's share those details again. I think we could get you guys on board. It should be. It's, it's, I don't know any other city in the country where benefits will go from 6% to 11%. It is the responsible thing to do. Credit to the workers who have stepped up and realized that they, it is the only way to guarantee in some ways keeping this healthcare benefit moving forward. But it is structural and it is reducing expenses. A couple of other things in here that I wanted to, to talk to, if you could go a little bit more into the TRAN piece, because I think that was quite interesting. One of the things we haven't talked a lot around, about here is the growth of the TRAN. For those who are uninitiated, the TRAN is a revenue anticipation note, tax revenue anticipation note. Essentially, we wait for the taxes to come in all year long, and we need more money to spend evenly throughout the year, even though the taxes come in unevenly. So we get a note, essentially go to the market and get the money to pay our bills, and as the taxes come in, we pay that off. But talk to us a little bit about that. It was some excellent work there and some interesting work as well. And then one last thing, because I know my time will be up. On the, on the CORE stuff, I put the CORE Commission together. It's near and dear to my heart. I just met with the commissioners a couple of days ago. We have been working so hard on the hiring of a collection sheriff, and there's all sorts of legal issues we have to tread through, but they have excellent, excellent recommendation. We are going to be introducing an omnibus motion on all the recommendations, probably in the next week or two. So we'll make sure that you all see that as advocates as well. And I think Mr. Parks will talk about that. But don't think that any of those recommendations have not been moving forward already, and I think we have some of the data. Mr. Parks, I don't know if you, you were able to see that the group was, I think it was last week or two weeks ago when we had spokes from the Office of Finance and talked about some of the numbers and how far they have increased this year, parking revenue, some other areas where there is great progress. You're right, it's a huge amount of money on the table. It frustrates me to know, and, but it is, like Mr. Rosendahl said, more realistically, probably a tenth of what we see, the giant number, because the other thing LA has not run like a business is businesses write off a certain part of their debt each year. They know it's uncollectible, and we've just pretended like somehow we're going to get it, and we set that up as a false number because somebody sees, because we've never written that off, a decade of which maybe 10% or 20% of that is collectible, and then we set ourselves up for failure. But talk to us a little bit more about the TRAN, please.
Well, the TRAN is something you've heard me talk about for several years now, but what has it actually evolved in this evaluation? The TRAN is a line of credit. It's necessary for the city to have it for all kinds of exigencies, but particularly because we don't collect major amounts of money until December or January, when the property taxes come in. Now, if there is a basic structural, a basic attitude change that we would like to recommend to this board, to this council, this is it. If we cannot budget our income in a way so that we minimize our line of credit, we're not very good businessmen, are we? But we can. It's not that difficult. We're already in process to try to negotiate several major changes in the TRAN. $1.2 billion in, uh, in a loan which we take out in July, 750 million of that goes to early payment of our pension plans, both the Lasers and the Fire and Police Pension Plan. And that generates a little bit of money, but it only defrays the actual interest. So what we're proposing is to move some of the income, which ordinarily doesn't come until much later in the year, and that we believe should come earlier. The DWP transfer was a major aggravation for you last year this time. And the DWP transfer amount is known. It is directly related to the, um, power utilities fees that all of us who have homes pay. So the DWP knows in June approximately how much it is. If we move that forward, that's $250 million or more into a space where we need it and where we could decrease that $1.2 billion TRAN, let's say to one, not millions, excuse me, $1.2 billion TRAN, to $1 billion. A second suggestion is to move the business taxes from February to July. That may mean one year in which businesses pay taxes twice, but that's the year in which you're doing your business, Mr. Businessman. I'm one of them. And, uh, that will also provide another 400 to 500 billion dollars, essentially eliminating the need for the TRAN altogether. However, it's still a good thing to have in order to have that line of credit for unforeseen problems. The documents that you have in front of you have the cash flow data from the Controller's Office and show how the effects could be. And I think immediately, there's a $4 million benefit to the city. The long-term benefit is that you readjust your ideas, that this city has an ongoing month-by-month, uh, revenue stream that is paying for our bills month by month. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for your, all your hard work. Uh, one thing, as you know, yesterday at the Budget and Finance Committee, we approved the motion to get a response from the CLA and the CAO. We scheduled that for April 27th response, when we start the budget deliberations, so we have the ability to hear what their responses are. Uh, I think one of the things that will give some balance, certainly, uh, appreciate your concern about the dollars in the sense of the debt collection, having worked on that for a number of years. But I think as if we go forward, some of those ideas will probably balance with a perspective as to what's achievable and what's collectible. Uh, because what's unfortunate, we've had in this city often reports that come out from the Controller that will say X number of dollars are uncollectible. And what you'll find as you look into it is a collective figure over time, as opposed to an annual debt. And they truly are not collectible. Uh, we had to work with the fire department the last couple of years that often showed debt on things they knew by law they couldn't collect. And so we've had the ability to move those out so that we would not give a false figure as to what was truly owed to the city. But I think it's important to get your perspective and also the issues of dealing with moving dates for revenue. Uh, certainly that helps you one year, but the year you don't get it, that's 400 and some odd million dollars that you have to go find. And so these are the kinds of things, I think, you have to look at the perspective of running the budget and also knowing that, uh, on a 12-month cycle, we're going to spend 4-point-something billion dollars, of which 90 some percent is going to be salaries. And what our goal is, even if we miss that by 5%, we're talking, or not 5%, but a half a percent, we're talking about double-digit millions if we miss our perception, our projection by a half a percent. But I think one of the issues too is that we've not had a circumstance because of cash flow or other issues that we failed to pay an employee. And that's why it's so sensitive, and 80% of our revenue comes from October to April. Uh, you move those dates at all, and you find that you will create a hole somewhere that you don't have a resource to fill. So I think that perspective will come from the response. We appreciate the work and certainly look forward to anything that could bring us more revenue and also the ideas of organization. Uh, one of the things I think I gave at the West LA meeting was the CF number that identified about 50 ideas that the CAO has come up with and hope that those are incorporated in some of your thought, because many of them you will see in this year's budget as to not only identifying them as reorganization, also identifying them as cost-saving, but also identifying it's going to take a minute to make them occur. And so, uh, we realize that with this upcoming budget of, uh, 4.1 or 2 billion dollars, that right off the bat, 900 million will go to, uh, medical costs and pension, which really leaves us about 3.2 to 3 billion dollars to actually fund the city of LA, of which about 70% of it is police-fire. And then on top of that, the rest of the city will be funded with less than a billion dollars. And so those are the kind of things of making the expenditures match the revenue, but also know that on the revenue side, uh, and we just had a meeting, Mr. Alakon pulled together a meeting out at the harbor, with all of the sensitivities on our revenue sources, the one that we have to plug in very, very soon is what happens to the city of LA and this region because of what's going on in Japan. And how many dollars do we expect? And if you look at the, the CAO's budget document, the one area that we have been very pleased with that has shown more revenue than in the past, where everything else is flattered down, is on trade, on tourism, where we have more people coming in, TOT tax. You can just about guess that in the next several months to a year, that because of the large volume of Japanese tourists, that that's going to take a dip. And so these are the kind of things, and as I mentioned last night, it's important for the CAO to give us a accurate figure as best that we can project for the start of the fiscal year, that we look at the 4.1 or 4.2 billion, get the most accurate figure that we can project, and then create the budget around it. Otherwise, we are cutting all year round or budgeting by hour, as opposed to knowing what the overall figure is. So we're looking forward to that joint report that will become So we're looking forward to that joint report that will be coming from the CAO/CLA, and we will certainly, it's already scheduled for April 27th for that response, so we make sure we give it early on in the budget process, so we clearly will have that information identified, and we can work with those principles throughout the budget session. So thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just also want to echo my thanks to you and your hard work, your diligence. In an economic crisis, we find ourselves looking for solutions. We look at your analysis, your observations, but I wanted to pose a question to you in terms of how we see ourselves being proactive. In other cities, they take an assessment of what they control, in terms of property, in terms of departments, in terms of resources, assets. I find myself, after chairing Plumb for 10 years and working in other cities, the legal cities, strategies in which you find municipalities consolidating parking facilities, consolidating departments, consolidating functions that opens up choice real estate for the purposes of enhancing the type of uses that complements those specific areas. My question to you really is, through the neighborhood councils, do you see a day in which we could be proactive in working with the neighborhood councils and assessing these opportunities, because we, property owners, we residents, we neighborhood advocates, know what is happening in our neighborhood? So I want to pose that to you from a proactive point of view, and just give your assessment on that.
Well, from a property point of view, one of our recommendations was to do an inventory, just starting at the city level with what you know. So if you take an inventory of all of the underutilized and nonutilized city properties, and then look at all of the outstanding leases in private sector that the city is leasing space in, and try and merge those department people back into city properties, we would save probably millions of dollars in leasing every year. In my district alone, I have an animal shelter sitting vacant for a number of years, and I have a housing department now moving into the building that we're housed in finally, that has been vacant for most of our building for close to 10 years. We have additional space that could be used. We have an animal shelter that could be used. We had a fire station in Mar Vista that could have been used. I'm sure you have properties downtown that could be used. You know, when money is flush, it's easy to spend. When the money's not there, we're looking between the cracks of the pillows for the quarters to pay the bills. Right now, we're looking for the quarters. So that's one aspect. The second aspect, this city has through the City Corks Office, a complete business improvement district system. It would behoove the neighborhood councils, the city council, and the business improvement districts to work together to inventory all of the vacant, available commercial space.
As my time diminishes, uh...
But you're right.
...this microphone, I would love to see, and I'll be very blunt with you, it's been my experience that has been more of, don't build it here. We don't want this here. Why impose on us? Why don't you put it over there? When we look at these opportunities. So I would hope through the neighborhood council structure, you can help us define what is being accepted, what are the definitions and parameters for the type of scenarios that really speaks to adding these types of developments in a respective neighborhood. So that's my encouragement to you as we work in a partnership. Thank you.
Agreed.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. And I agree with Councilmember Rosenthal. This is really a great historic moment to have our partners in our neighborhoods working with us on how to solve the budget problem. And I really like the fact that this is an inclusive process. I would like to see more input from various groups on, you know, our budget process. I would like to get our unions, our coalitions earlier in the process to put ideas and solutions on the table. So I really appreciate what you've done, and by the way, I don't want this just to be a report that gets put on a shelf either. I think you have some really important recommendations, some insights, some things we haven't thought about. I mean, we were all sitting here going, really? The whole trans idea, there must, we're thinking, is there a reason why we're not doing that?
Yes.
It seems so simple, so easy, is there a reason we're not doing it? And I'm sure our CAO will tell us his opinion of that, but one of the things I've asked for is a report back from our CAO on each and every recommendation that you have made. I don't want this to be a report put on the shelf. You've worked way too hard. You have too much invested in it, and I think there's some solutions that we think are, certainly could be utilized. Many of them are one-time solutions, which is okay, because many times we come up with one-time solutions, but some of them look like they're long-term corrections to this structural problem. Two of the ones I'd like you to maybe talk a little bit more today are, one is the replacing the Personnel Department's worker comp division software, and why that will save us money, and didn't know if you looked at what the cost would be to switch over to new software. Did you include that in part of your analysis? And the other thing was the city controller's audits. You mentioned, I think, some 300 audits that had not been enacted.
Thirty-eight.
How many?
Thirty-eight.
Oh, 38, good. I thought it was 300.
Three hundred million.
Oh, 300 million, okay. So 38 we haven't enacted. I'd like for you to touch on some of those, highlight maybe which ones of those you think really, if enacted by us, would actually save money. And third thing, briefly, the elections for neighborhood councils. And I see, you know, clearly, and that was one of my ideas, because when I chaired the Neighborhood Education Neighborhood Council, as you remember, Dr. Weisman, we had every committee meeting was filled with dissension and arguments and frustration about the elections. We had protests, we had grievances, we really couldn't move forward, if you recall, because of the elections that the city council, the neighborhood councils themselves were orchestrating. It was my idea to think, gee, we have a city clerk. The city clerk knows how to run elections. They can run the elections in their sleep practically. Why don't we have that department run these elections, you know, one-size-fits-all, neighborhood councils won't have to burden themselves with running elections? But that hasn't exactly turned out to be as rosy of a picture as I predicted, and in fact, one of the budget solutions you're looking at is obviously to take that back, which would save the city money and, yeah, save a significant amount of money, which I'm okay with. I just, will tell you, just from my experience on the committee, there have been a lot less grievances and frustrations about the outcomes as there was previously. But it sounds like you're willing to deal with that, you're willing to take that back on, and I think that's certainly something we're going to probably move to. So I don't know if you remember, just talk on the worker's comp software, and if you could highlight some of the controllers' audits that you feel we haven't enacted yet. And again, thanks for your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. From the elections point of view, you know, we're not here today to tell you how to run elections. You know, we have an elections task force. I've used this verbiage in the last couple of weeks. Neighborhood councils now are all growed up. You know, we're not the little children that we were 10 years ago. We've morphed into an organization that wants to be a part of the city family, and the majority of neighborhood councils today are well-functioning and certainly do what we believe is a lot of field work for you guys that your staff can't even get to. So when it comes to elections, our recommendation has been to put it, we put a number on it based on what we believe and what we've seen, both with electronic voting, non-electronic voting, city clerk being, you know, the IEA, city clerk not being the IEA, city clerk doing the whole job. The real recommendation from our standpoint is to hold off the elections, hold them a year, save the million dollars, and during that year, figure out the best way, a real system. Because what we're doing now is crisis management. Once again, we have one group that says, I must have elections today, and another group that says, it's really okay if we don't. The bylaws of the neighborhood councils are very clear. If somebody wants to quit because they didn't sign up for five years, they can quit, and it's very simple to appoint someone to take that seat. Therefore, you know, we looked at it from the standpoint, if we're really looking at structural fixes, this is a structural fix. Find the right way to do the elections and then move forward. And at the same time, it may save us a million dollars, which may help us keep our $5,000 that we hear is the cut for neighborhood councils. So if you can get a million and not a half a million, isn't that a better deal, and at the same time have a more functional neighborhood council election system? Ms. Hahn, we are no longer in an experiment mode. I am not in danger of getting my face slapped ever again. This is now deadly serious, and this is now a work in progress. The white paper that is before you right now already has three major issues that weren't there when it was written. The coalition agreement, the, let me listen for you, the electronics corrections and the things that we need in order to have proper ITA, the property sales. We've just, yesterday, obtained the full property list and had the beginnings of discussions with the general services people about why do we have all this property, which is really a dead issue. It's the potential for tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars, one-time money. There's no issue that's before us that is simple. There's no issue that doesn't have pluses and minuses. This is the beginning of our discussions. We look forward to ongoing discussion until we can find something which is the best that we can find, and that's all there is, and be sure we have a feedback loop to come back and look at it again in the near future to see if what we were proposing is working, because if it isn't, the process goes on and on again until we get it to the best it can be. These major structural changes are absolutely essential, and they were made essential because of the so-called budget crisis we're in. But we're not in a crisis of revenue, we're in a crisis of expenses.
I think, I think it's both.
Well, the revenues have been approximately 4.3 million every year for the last five years, and are predicted by the controller to be, again, within $50 billion, a 4.3 billion. Sorry, I get confused about these billions, you know? It's the Tip O'Neill Principle, a billion here and a billion there, and sooner or later it adds up to a lot of money. Enough, however, but this is the beginning of our discussion, and I hope this is an ongoing process that we now have started.
Did you want to talk just a little bit about the control?
Yeah, all right, the audits, well, I can take it.
Just a couple that we might...
Yeah, the one that is the biggest was the collections, because Ms. Gruel estimated $300 million. There are a whole series of other audits, and they are in this scorecard that you just see the front page of. We have 88 issues in here which are not defined, 88. We've been talking about a couple dozen that have some dollars that we can talk about, and the controller talks about the merger of the finance, Office of Finance with the Treasurer. Well, if we do that, and we incorporate the city attorney in the so-called ACE program, which I understand is now in deliberation with you, then this is an ideal time to consider that merger and completely consider how we make our collections. Clearly, we're not doing a good job on that. There is one after another item. The DOT issue is still before us. The controller thinks that the DOT is collecting only about 50% of the traffic tickets. We have new traffic meters, parking meters now, I'm sorry, parking tickets. We have new parking meters now, they seem to be working better. The general manager of DOT thinks that it's 85%. That's fine. 85% of $280 million still leaves about 40 to 50 million that is not being collected. Is it not being collected because it isn't collectible, or it shouldn't be collected, or what can we do to see how much of that we can chip away at? Every million dollars is to our advantage.
I'm not speaking again.
Thank you.
On the worker's comp software, we had some data on that that indicated that updating the Personnel Department worker's comp software would return a payback in 1.2 years, 1.2 years, it would all be paid for, and it would start saving us money. I'm not sure what, how much it would generate, but it's the idea is it's a cost savings, it's a 1985 software system.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
You know, I first want to thank you for engaging in the process of thinking about how does the city balance its budget, what can the city do, and I appreciate your recommendations. However, some of your recommendations have been talked about by council members, by mayors, by people running for office, et cetera, and once again, we hear the issue about collecting overdue fees. And even though the stagnant number might be in the tens and tens of millions of dollars, maybe even hundreds of millions of dollars potentially, isn't that more of a one-time infusion of money, not necessarily an ongoing? What figure is uncollected right now?
Well, we don't know, and the reason we don't know...
Round figure to the nearest 50 million or something? I mean, somebody told you.
Well, actually, we asked what the delinquent amounts were, and the email, the last email we got back a few days ago was, we're having a very difficult time discerning that number...
Okay, what's your estimation?
Hundred, more than $100 million.
Okay, say it's $100 million. Let's use round figures. Let's go through an exercise, please, if you would.
Sure.
Say it's $100 million of uncollected fees. Now, if we got really, really, really good at collecting those backdated fees, those delinquent fees, that would be a one-time infusion of dollars, right?
No.
No?
No, and the reason is, you are continually not collecting money on an annual basis.
No, 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 hold on a second. That's step two. Step one is identifying $100 million of fees that have accumulated over the last five, six, seven years, right?
Right.
However, there's also a different figure of how many, how much in fees tend to go delinquent on an annual basis. Let's call that seven, okay, $10 million, right? Now, let's get back to my first question. The first $100 million that you referred to in your presentation, that is a one-time infusion of dollars, right?
That money would be one time.
Okay, exactly. So the thing is, right now, the city of Los Angeles, the city council's going to have to figure out how to balance the budget that is out of balance coming into the future year in excess of $350 million, correct?
Correct.
So that infusion of dollars could help us in a one-year. If we really got good next year and collected, say, 90% of those $100 million, we got an infusion of $90 million, right?
Right.
But that doesn't solve the ongoing problem of having to try to compress and get a handle on a 300 and some, $400 million budget gap, correct?
It's a piece of solving the $350 million, because you'll have increased revenue collection next year based on your revenue collection efficiencies you institute this year. So it would give you a percentage more of money next year that you would not have collected next year based on the inefficiencies of the collection system today.
Correct, but it still would not be in the magnitude of $90 million a year ongoing.
I don't believe... I'm sorry, it would be.
Yes, Dr. Weisman.
There are three large departments that have large amounts of uncollectibles. Apparently, the ambulance services that we provide are something about $90 million that we do not collect on. As a physician...
Annually?
Annually.
Okay.
And we have, as a physician who's billed Medi-Cal and Medicare for a long period of time, I know the problems, but that's another issue. The second one, well, the biggest one...
Excuse me, what you just pointed out, all I want to do, ladies and gentlemen, is thank you for your efforts, but at the same time, what you're expressing, doctor, is that you said that's another matter.
That is annual.
Basically, what you're expressing to us and to the public, thank you very much, is that this budgeting issue is not black and white. It's not simple.
No.
It is very complicated, because sometimes what happens is, when you try to enact one action, you actually have to overcome other obstacles that are beyond your control, and hopefully with cooperation or what have you, you can actually capture those dollars and then put them into the coffers, and then save the taxpayers money, or retrieve some monies that are due the city so that the taxpayers aren't tapped on, yes.
Let me give you three statistics. The Department of Transportation and their parking fees estimate that they write $280 million worth of parking fines every year. The controller thinks that only 50% of those are collected. The department itself says that it's 85%. Okay, fine. The second largest is the ambulance that I've just reported, and apparently $90 million of what the audit says could be collected is not collected. And the third one is the police traffic tickets of various kinds, and that adds up to about another $10 million of uncollected.
See, there's something interesting...
There's $300 million at question.
Thank you. You're on my time and only give us three minutes, and the president's being very generous.
You know how we feel.
Please, thank you. The thing that I wanted to point out is that you did a great job of identifying various factions of what can be done, but at the same time, it's... factions of what can be done, but at the same time, it's much harder to actually put those into action and have them generate the revenue that the projections talk about. And that's one of the biggest difficulties that government has. But one of the main problems, when you talk about collecting fines and fees or what have you, unlike those of us, ladies and gentlemen, who have actually owned a business, when we're collecting from somebody, most of the time, in a business setting, unlike government, in a business setting, we vetted them out before we got into that situation where eventually, unfortunately, we had to collect from somebody that we vetted out. We did an analysis of them, we interviewed them, or we actually ran a credit report or something like that before we engage in a matter that they would transact with us. And unfortunately, some of those transactions go to collections, and then we try to collect. The biggest difference with government is we are a service provider, and when you write somebody a ticket, you don't run their credit report. So there's no proof that they're actually even collectible actions. And that's one of the biggest differences between government. And I'm not discounting the fact that we could do a better job. I agree that we could do a better job. But unfortunately, I think it's disingenuous for me to sit here, or for you, or for anybody to sit anywhere and try to convey to the general public that there's $90 million or $300 million sitting out there, and we could just get off of our rear end and just make it happen. I'm not saying that's what you said, but unfortunately, unless we have this kind of dialogue, some people could walk away from their TV screen or what have you, thinking that, but by gosh, these are such simple solutions, and it took people with their part-time, you know, time, volunteering their time to look into and tear open the city budget, and they figured it out better than these people who are getting paid to do it. With all due respect, you've done a really fine job of pointing out some things that have already been pointed out. You've done a really fine job of pointing out some things that we are going to continue to pursue. But at the same time, I really wish it was that black and white and that simple. Unfortunately, it's not, and I look forward to the continued dialogue and back and forth between the neighborhood councils, the city council, and the entire community of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some public comment cards. I want to thank everybody for the time they've had at the table. I think we're going to head to the public comment cards. Oh, Mr. Alacon just pressed his button. Sorry. Mr. Alacon, and then we'll go to public comment.
Actually, I appreciate what both the committee has come forward with and what Councilman Cardenas says, because a couple of years ago, I introduced motions to get a handle on the collections, particularly of the parking revenue. But what I learned is also very frustrating, and that is that collections is never what it appears. In other words, whatever the amount that is targeted for collection appears, and have any of you worked with collections in your businesses or whatever? So you know that whatever the largest amount is, is not usually what the agreed-upon settlement is. And if you're paying a collector 15%, knock off 15% off the top, then you settle some, you make some arrangement below that. So when we throw around figures of a couple hundred million dollars, if you knocked off 15%, you're looking at 170 million. Then if you settle on many of those that are disputed, because, oh, it's hard to imagine that some of the collections might be incorrect, and the public might have a good dispute as to why they're saying they owe the city money. And so you have to knock off some of that. And so at the end of the day, it's not what it appears. But I do think it's something that we need to do better, and that is the question. So I actually think that focusing on that, and with your assistance, you know, to the degree that you can provide it, would be helpful. And so I thank you for that. But let's not create misperceptions that if the city is short $200 million, we're going to collect $200 million. If we have uncollectibles of $200 million, we're likely to get $100 million, and many businesses would be very thankful for that. But I think we do, at a minimum, we need to know what we're talking about, and that's the most frustrating thing, when you go to one department, and I don't want to mention any names, because I think it's almost consistent. But if you go to one department and ask them, how much collections, how much do you have in collections, and they don't know, I mean, it's very frustrating. So I think this is something, whether it's $5 million, $10 million, or $100 million, it's something that we should do a lot better.
Thank you. And again, thank you for this historic coming together and being here at the center table. I'm going to ask you guys for a public comment if we can hear that next. John Walsh is our first speaker. And then you have a card, Dr. Wiseman, but I assume that you're covered in. You want to submit that to the record?
This is the white book.
Great.
You have the white paper. This is the beginning.
Great.
All the comments that were made, we greatly appreciate. We understand and we want to work on it.
And if you want any help putting that online as well, let us know. I know that the summary part, Mr. Gukor had up, but we can make sure that goes someplace as well on the city website. Thank you. Mr. Walsh is our first speaker.
John Walsh, logging in Hollywood Highlands.org. Visit us. I attended meetings of both the elected and non-elected charter commission. The big issue 10 years ago was simple, whether the neighborhood councils would have any power other than advisory. And many people on the commission said, yes, they have to have power or it's a joke. Advisory means nothing. In fact, Rosendahl said it. Did you hear what you said? You said, when they sit up here in the well, the city council takes them seriously. When we speak from the podium, the city council doesn't take us seriously. Now, that may be politically incorrect, but at least you slipped and you told us the truth, which is, but remember, you are being toyed with up here. They have no respect for you until we put on the ballot something that gives you teeth. Because this is like a cat show. You are up here showing your claws. No one cares. They're falling asleep here. I'm telling you right now, it's not going to happen with the neighborhood councils until they do what happened in Yemen, what happened in Libya, what happened in Cairo. Until, but, and incidentally, I see them up here, and it's always, incidentally, it's supposed to be rainbow. It's supposed to be for everybody, but look who the leaders are, these three leaders, four leaders, five leaders, middle-aged white guys. It always turns out to middle-aged white guys with one token who hardly spoke a word because she was told she didn't have a place to speak while the white men spoke. HollywoodHighlands.org causing trouble forever.
Our next speaker is Joanne Yovanik Garb.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Joanne Yovanik Garb. I'm with West Hills Neighborhood Council. From the comments that I've heard, you, the questions that you've asked, I know that you are taking our thoughts seriously. Something that just hit me is that on the uncollectibles, I know that when I had to take an ambulance right after my auto accident, I got a bill, and it was pay this amount. But if you were to take and say, if you cannot pay this amount, can you make monthly payments and let us make a painted plan? And that would be, that would solve part of your non-collectibles. Also, on the tickets, if you have a ticket and that ticket is outstanding, when your driver's license comes up for renewal, you can't get it. Or when your car registration comes up for renewal, you can't get it because you have a ticket lien on your car. That would also prevent these people who are abusers and have 40 or 50 outstanding tickets on their record, okay? I really appreciate the work. I know the work that these people have put in because I listen to it on a daily basis. These people did not do it part-time. This was a full-time job for these people over the past six months, since last November when they were elected. They have worked on this full-time, and it wasn't an easy task for them. And I greatly appreciate all the work that they did, and I'm really thankful that neighborhood councils are getting their just dues. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker, and then Mr. Bobby Cooper.
Dr. Clyde Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council in El Sereno. Couple things need to be added. How about full-cost recovery? A lot of things are not based upon full-cost recovery, and that's one of the elements that has to be incorporated. The special funds integration.
Yeah.
LA DOT and the Bureau of Engineering work closely already. Why are they still separate departments? I don't know. One of the elements also in this is the ability of the common people, the residents of LA, to access what's going on. When you take Channel 35 and reduce the service, that's an element. Yeah, we got to find full-cost recovery somehow. I don't know. But transparency and accessibility to the information that you are privy to, but we're not, that sounds like something. Yeah, if we don't know about how to recover, how can we judge it? So one of the elements there is, let's be much more transparent. That doesn't cost us very much at all. Let's be more informative through Channel 35. That doesn't cost much at all. And remember that out there, you got 80,000 people-hours per year being devoted by neighborhood council stakeholders or more. So that sounds like a pretty good buy, because tomorrow night, LA 32 Neighborhood Council has to divvy out the $30,000. Elsewise, we'll lose it by the end of the year. But we have plans. We have activities for the community, for the real people of LA, the residents, your voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper? Do you hear?
Good morning. My name is Clint Simmons, and I'm a member of the West Hills Neighborhood Council. And the neighborhood council has done and will continue to do a good job here in aiding the city. But the neighborhood councils must also get respect from the city council, specifically when it comes to the budgetary items. Instead of taking money away, we need more so that we can do things in the community that is presently not being done. One of the reasons why the neighborhood council was formed, I think we all forget, is because of a threat to break up the city. And since that has happened, the neighborhood council was supposed to be a part, a very most implementing part for the city council, and that hasn't happened to this case. Since each year goes by, since the 10 years it was established, our usefulness to the city council seemed to diminish, and that must stop if we're going to work as a group. A lot of the things that have been found and uncovered by the city has happened through the city, through the neighborhood councils. And we have people volunteering work in all categories. We have bankers, engineers, doctors, you name it, who are part of the neighborhood council. Many of us have more experience than some of the members of the city council or their advisors who may be advising them. And so I would like to see a little more concern, specifically when it comes to the budgetary items, instead of taking money away from us, give us more so we can do a better job. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Arnold Sachs, our last speaker.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. Only came in, and I only heard the two councilmen speak, so I'd like to address what was said. A percentage of what needed to be collected, well, 15% of $200 million, by the way, is $185 million. But that's not the point. The point is, it's money that needs to be collected. Let's look at another program. You just passed an increase to the libraries to take out a greater percentage from the general fund. Again, where are you getting the money from? Well, you're getting it from the general fund. But where are you finding the funding in the general fund? All the rhetoric and all the discussion was about, we need this to open the libraries up, but we have no source of income. After the elections, the discussion about the budget, just remember, I heard it four times, just remember that when you take or leave money in a department, you have to find an equal source to replace that revenue. Where was all these great minds when you talked about the library? Must have been out to lunch. Must have been at the library. Next question. You could do a better job. Last year was a deficit. You could do a better job. The year before was a deficit. You could do a better job. The year before, we could do a better job. You only get four years in a term, so that's one term where you could do a better job. When does the public see results? And those collectibles that aren't chased after result in libraries closing, parks closing, services for the people that need it the most being eliminated.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. And again, thank you to the folks for all the hard work they've done for neighborhood councils. I know Mr. Rosendahl wanted to ask a couple of things of the CAO, so if you guys want to sit here over in the front row, we appreciate you and thank you for all the --
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You were christened by John Walsh. We all have been, so welcome to the club of the John Walsh-ism. Okay, we would like Miguel Santana to come up and clearly explain and interact for a minute or two or three on exactly what we heard. I think many of us are appreciative of what Miguel will say right now in context of what the leadership of the advocacy group just said. Miguel?
Thank you. First, let me thank the committee for its report. I think it's very helpful, and dovetails nicely with the report that we issued last week. We're working with the CLA to submit a formal response to the report, and we'll go through item by item. That will be done concurrent with the first discussion on the budget on April 27 in Budget and Finance Committee. So we've already started to do the analysis on this particular report. There's, just to, I'll spend just a couple of minutes just talking about the similarities that I think in areas that we could work in concert with. Particularly, there's certainly been a lot of discussion about revenue collection, and we've spent a lot of time looking at that issue. Once the core recommendation on the revenue sheriff gets fully implemented, I think that would go a long way. We are particularly supportive in the recommendations in terms of helping general managers manage liability claims, holding them accountable for the claims that are issued in the same way that we want to make them responsible for the overall cost of their workforce. We are supportive of the city attorney's ACE enforcement program and are recommending it as a pilot, starting with the Department of Animal Services. We are supportive of looking at strengthening our asset management. Our report recommends engaging in a performance audit of that function and ultimately coming back with recommendations on how to strengthen it from top to bottom. In terms of making structural changes in the city government itself, we're very supportive of efforts to try to consolidate departments and functions so that there's greater efficiency throughout the system, looking at the consolidation of the Finance Department and the Treasurers Department, something that we recommended in our report. Reducing ongoing expenditures in our personnel is one of the principal pillars of our report, particularly when it comes to health care as well as pension costs. Pension reform, fortunately, was adopted for new tiers in the sworn. We're still pursuing a new tier for civilians as part of an overall strategy to reduce pension costs. A key recommendation here is the elimination of furloughs. That is something that we strongly support, and is why we negotiate with the -- That is something that we strongly support and is why we negotiated with the Coalition of Unions an agreement that fully covers the costs of the furloughs for next year, increases the following year, and fully covers the cost the year after that. This is an agreement. The final language is still being developed today. So, you know, the reason why you don't see a document is because there hasn't been one that's been finalized by my office and the Coalition. But essentially, the concepts are that the furloughs are fully paid for and so we can reduce that amount that the Coalition agreement provides for the next three years into the deficit. And when you are asked to formally vote on this item, should the members ratify it, we will be able to demonstrate to you exactly how that agreement reduces the deficit for the next three years.
Just to take the point that one of the advocates said there about the 4% health care and the vested interest and also the pension, would you explain that for us?
Currently, retiree health care is a benefit that we have been providing to our employees at no cost to them while they're working in city government. It is a practice that the city has engaged in. Our city attorney has a point that the vested, what is vested today is a benefit that you get should you retire today. What this agreement does, it has, for the first time, have our members, employees themselves, pay for that benefit. And the 4% that is in the agreement fully pays for the benefit itself. It is structured where, when we negotiate, go back to the bargaining table at the expiration of this particular agreement, we can, in fact, negotiate a higher contribution should that cost increase at that time. So what it provides us is immediate savings in a significant way to help mitigate the shortfalls that we're seeing in the future. It also, as Mr. Garcetti indicated, it provides a three-year target for reduction of health care for current employees, as well as controlling our compensation costs by capping step increases, eliminating or reducing overtime for the general funds and cash. And of course, it extends the time in which we provide the COLAs that had been previously negotiated several years ago. So it allows for us to, in fact, reduce the deficit out next year, the year after that, the year after that. But of course, we'll go into detail on that agreement once it's formally before you and we hope in the next few weeks following ratification.
Mr. Lavange?
Question, you've had county experience. This is a technical question. And historically, I'm trying to find it, why did municipalities or counties have separate retirement systems as opposed to social security? And if you don't have the deep answer, I think we should get it because I think there's something that's important to know, what the thinking was. It wasn't as if we were trying to create a separate system. But if we could research that, I think we all could share in that to know the history. So if you could have your office research that, I would appreciate that. And also, if you could, if you look at the number of employees who were pre-whatever milestones, there's a milestone coming up with the recent election of those who were post, but there's certain milestones. I was on a 2% pension contribution until recently. How many of us are 2%ers and now we're 8%? Or just, I think it's important for us to see the numbers and a milestone effect here. And is there any, and I know it's very difficult, but is there any thinking in your world of top managers throughout the country of what to do in a sense of cost savings? Because public service is an important service. And at the same time, there's a benefit that's important, but at the same time, we should not live above those who we serve in any way. And because of possibly not having the same vision that may have came out of the 1930s and the Depression, how FDR tried to work, that we focus on it, private business doesn't share that same value. So there's a value. And other things internationally too, if you could. Because I know there's a lot of people who talk about compensation and compensation of that, those who are in the public. And whether they're schoolteachers, firefighters, police officers, sanitation workers, et cetera. So that would be helpful, I think, for us if we go on, plus the numbers and milestone. In addition to those for the neighborhood councils, I want to thank you. I had a pre-scheduled meeting out of this room for a moment, but I will meet and talk with you to hear more from you as well. Thank you. And good to see an Ivanhoe graduate here, David.
Thank you. All right, with that, I think this is time for a vote. Sorry, Ms. Hahn? Is it for note and file?
No, I just want to make sure that when can we expect back a thorough review of their recommendations and suggestions?
Mr. Parks has directed us to ensure that it's part of the first meeting on the budget on April 27th. So our report will be submitted prior to that.
Good.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll, noting and filing, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you again very much. We appreciate everybody's time and attention to that.
Just make sure you also communicate with the Budget Committee of Neighborhood Councils. I would think it would sort of be going around the process if it just came to us and didn't go back to them, so they'd have an opportunity to analyze your analysis.
Sure, and no problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl for an announcement.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for this extraordinary moment here, colleagues, for just a second. I want to talk about something that's really great, okay? ABC has a new television show. It's called The Secret Millionaire. And this Sunday night at 8:00 on ABC, four charities in Venice are going to be highlighted, of which the one I'm standing with, which is really the major one, is called Harvest Home. Harvest Home is a home that serves eight women at any given time who are pregnant or having young children. Annually, they serve between 20 and 24 women and their newborn babies. The average stay is nine to 12 months, which enables staff and mentors to connect and develop relationships. The other groups, by the way, that are getting it are the Common Ground, which is a West Side HIV Center for the homeless, the Beauty Bus, which helps the chronically ill look good and feel good, and Bread and Roses, which is the St. Joseph Center, which feeds about 150 people five days a week. But I just wanted to highlight the major group that, you know, it's just the way good things work. Out of the blue, ABC contacted them and got engaged with them. And standing right next to me right now is Jennifer Jensen, who is the one that the ABC people will have featured and the whole organization this Sunday night at 8:00. So I just wanted to say a couple of words.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for having us. I would just like to thank you for recognizing the vital work that we are doing in and for our community, especially for homeless pregnant women and their children, which is a very vulnerable population. We love being in Los Angeles and we so appreciate your support and Councilman Rosendahl's support as well. And one of the reasons why we appreciate Councilman Rosendahl's support is we know his background with some social work background. And we know that he is really vested in our community in helping solve the social problems that Venice and everyone in his district is experiencing right now. So I want to say thank you to Councilman Rosendahl for that. And I also want to say that really, our goal is to really transform the lives of women, homeless pregnant women and their children by helping them identify and overcome the root causes of their homelessness and to promote physical and emotional health and spiritual growth and financial independence. And how does that relate to you? It relates to you in that our main goal is helping these women become self-sufficient, not self-sufficient with government aid and resources, but actually self-sufficient where they require no government resources. So that is our goal. That is success for us. So thank you so much for recognizing the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
And if I could take just a brief moment to, here's this plaque, but I'd like to introduce just the people that work at Harvest Home. And because this is a people-helping-people organization, and without the people that I have standing here, there would be no Harvest Home and this service would not be offered to the women that need it most. So I'd like to start with our staff. Debbie Metler, who is our volunteer coordinator, and through The Secret Millionaire Show, it's all about volunteers and getting volunteers coming out to help organizations like Harvest Home. They help us run efficiently because we can't pay everyone to do what we do. And then I also have Marie McCall, who is a live-in house manager, and she is kind of like the crux of what we do. She is meeting with them every day. She is like the parent, so she is with them every day. It's a very critical role. We also have Deborah Lee, who is our case manager, and she brings the program and the women together. She has the accountability and everything. Oh, she takes care of all of the accountability and that the women meet their goals and setting the individualized plan, and so she's a very critical part too. And then I have our board of directors, and I'll just introduce them by name. Our chair is Marty Trippiano. We have Sharon Trippiano, Christina Colissar, and we have Jeannie Draves. So thank you so much on behalf of all of us for inviting us down and recognizing the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. It's a little bit out of order as a presentation. It was supposed to be just an introduction, guys, and we appreciate your patience, but if we can keep it really short, go ahead, Ms. Hahn, but really short.
And congratulate you and thank you and say that in an environment where everyone is trying to cut spending, particularly for those who need it most, it's so refreshing to hear from Harvest Home, who actually has a long-term solution for helping women, as you said, become sustainable. Marty and Sharon Trippiano, you've been friends of mine for a very long time, and I know you would not be associated with an organization that didn't actually get results. So thank you, Harvest Home. Thank you, Bill Rosendahl, for bringing this to our attention. These are the success stories we need to hear. Congratulations.
Mr. Lavange?
Job, very good. Good job. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to item number 15 next. Mr. Parks called that special. I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks on item number 15. While the meantime, why don't we?
Thank you, Mr. Here. Could I have Housing Department to come up, please? Colleagues, one of the things is just a brief presentation by Housing, primarily because this council has done such great work as it relates to foreclosures. And sometimes we don't get a sense of the impact because we deal with these ordinances incrementally. Today, we're dealing with an ordinance that deals with RSO housing. But I would just like from Housing to give just a brief overview that this odyssey started with the issue of changing the ability to be evicted because of a foreclosure. And we moved from there to a registry. We moved from there to, if something is, a house or a multi-unit is foreclosed on, that the foreclosed agency has to then pay for the utilities. And now we're dealing with RSO. So just give us an overview of what Housing has done in that area. And there may be others in the future we may need to address. I thought it would be important that the public knows just the brief history of what accomplishments have been done by Housing.
Sure. Good afternoon, Royal Babasada, Housing Department. As Councilmember Parks mentioned, Housing Department uses an array of existing programs and also programs that were developed to deal with issue of termination of utility in foreclosed properties. We did have existing programs, including Utility Maintenance Program, AMP, and Rent Esco Account Program, REAP. But properties that are in these two programs, when the utilities are at the danger of being shut off, we use the funds in the Esco accounts that are established with the department to pay the delinquent bills with DWP and maintain the utilities. This has been very successful. Last year, we were able to prevent utility shut-off in 220 properties and pay over $500,000 to DWP for delinquent bills. Also, for properties that are not in AMP and REAP, we did have agreement with DWP that was developed in 2008. When property is in foreclosure stage, there is a delinquent bill. DWP referred these properties to Housing Department and gave us 60 days to work with the banks and convince them to make the payments. Banks are working with us. It's very easy for staff to identify that paying a small deal of utility is much less costly than paying thousands of dollars of relocation. So banks are working with Housing Department in that regard. Also, DWP worked with us on case-by-case basis to maintain utility and put the account under the name of the lender or tenants to prevent the shut-off. We also developed a program, foreclosure registry. Based on that ordinance, the banks are required to register their agents with the Housing Department or with Mayor's. And by this way, we have their agents and we can contact them and make sure that they are aware of their liability to maintain the properties. Foreclosure registry enforcement is responsibility of Building and Safety Department, but Housing Department is working with Building and Safety to identify nuisance and blighted properties through the course of inspection that SCAP provides. When identifying these properties refer to Building and Safety, then they can make that enforcement. Also, through extending the moratorium to provide tenants in foreclosed property with the protection that also provides to prevent any eviction and illegal rent increase. That was another line that the department got extension, and this is going to be enforced this year. Through the whole picture of all these programs, we believe that we have been successful in providing protection for tenants and preventing utilities shut-off.
Well, thank you very much. And I'd just ask Housing Department if there's any other loopholes that deal with this whole issue of foreclosure or rent-stabilized property that we are paying relocation and not recovering, that you bring that to our attention so we can tweak these ordinances that have come forward over the last year or so.
AMP is very limited program. I believe you are making reference to amending foreclosure registry for that, for enforcement?
Yes. But there's some loopholes there. Let us know because we've done them incrementally, but we may find that in practice that we've left some of these options out and we need to correct them because the city should not be going forward and paying costs that they can't recover, particularly if it's still on a foreclosed property.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you. Thank you for your good work. Thank you for your patience last Friday as well. With that, we'll go to Special One and Mr. City Attorney to address the council on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that City Council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of two suspects who brutally beat and seriously injured Brian Stowe simply for wearing Giants gear following the Dodgers-Giants opening day baseball game. Immediate action is required to apprehend these suspects for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. On the findings, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
All right, Mr. Smith, we seem to have a case of senioritis has disappeared, but we still do have 12 members. And we do have two public comment cards on this, and then we'll hear from Mr. Reyes. Take the cards first, or you want to speak first?
Cards first.
Okay. John Walsh and then Arnold Sachs. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh. Oh, it's a very special item. We'll take one minute, Mr. Walsh, and then Mr. Sachs.
You're already cutting me down. I can say it in one minute. John Walsh, I'm talking to the entire United States of America, because this is going to be on YouTube. Only in L.A. does this happen. Only in L.A. is Dodger Stadium part of gang territory. Only in L.A. does McCourt allow the amount of security to fall to the point where Mr. Stowe was beaten to a pulp. And I want you to know he has done it in front of hundreds and hundreds of witnesses. And those witnesses are afraid to go to the police. They're afraid for a very good reason, because the gangs run L.A. And where is the mayor? This is Mr. Reyes who is putting this forward. Where is the mayor? And I'm going to give you the LAP detectives, they're not going to give it to you. If you have any information about these murderers, contact Detective I. Burcher or P.J. Morris at 213-847-4261.
Mr. Sachs? Okay, Mr. Sachs passes. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. It is a tragic event in a family venue. But on Friday, March 31st, 2011, just after 8:30 p.m., 41-year-old Brian Stowe, along with several of his friends, who happen to be Giant fans...
be Giant fans, were followed and confronted by two suspects in the parking lot of Dodger Stadium. The suspects yelled derogatory comments towards the victim and his friends, who ignored the suspects and continued walking. The suspect continued to follow the victim, in which time, one of the suspects struck the victim in the head with a closed fist, knocking him unconscious. The suspects continued to kick the victim in the head and torso as he lay on the ground. The suspects then fled on foot to a waiting vehicle driven by a third suspect. Brian sustained life-threatening head injuries, was currently receiving medical care at USC Medical Center, where he is listed in critical condition. Colleagues, I'd like to offer this reward with the recommendation of Los Angeles Police Department. It's on their request that we put this forward. Those of us who know that it is difficult to sometimes get witnesses, but I'm hoping those who are listening to this session, council, those of you who are aware of friends or relatives who might have been at the game, it's important that we bring these suspects to justice. Los Angeles is not about what we just heard. Los Angeles is about family events. It's a neighborhood city that is made up of great people, great families, and we need to bring these people to justice. So, I'll ask you for an I-vote, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing this forward. Understand there was also another incident that happened, because this was the day after opening day, right? Because there was also an incident, I believe, on opening day. And this is the opening day one. This is the opening day one, yeah. And then there might have been another one after that. But I also want to urge the Dodgers to step up security. I mean, by the way, these are, I don't consider these thugs Dodger fans. These are people who take an opening day event, they go, they get drunk, they party, and then they viciously, you know, attack, and there are no way indicative of Dodger fans. But I really want to ask the Dodger organization to step up security after these games in the parking lot. This is a terrible tragedy, obviously, for Brian, and we certainly hope that he is going to recover from this. But, you know, I've heard people say that they're not, they don't want to take their kids anymore to Dodger games. They don't feel like it's a family-friendly venue, and that's a real shame because Dodger games have always been a place where people could go, could take their kids. So, I think it's also about security, and I don't know if that's LAPD, if that's private security, but I think the Dodgers, the McCourts, the organization should really step up security after the games in these parking lots. This is 8:30. It wasn't like midnight, and so I would also urge them to do something so that people feel safe going to a Dodger game and can feel safe bringing their families. You know, I'd like to see alcohol not get sold to people who are clearly already inebriated, and that's what's happening. People are tailgating first, then they're going into the Dodger Stadium, then they're drinking more, and then this stuff happens. This is unacceptable, and it really is a terrible reflection on what used to be a very family-friendly, you know, sporting event. And again, along with this motion, I'm happy to do this. I hope this brings these thugs to justice, but I think it's a problem, and I call on the Dodgers to step up security, along with LAPD, much more after the games. They ought to be in the parking lot, watching people get to their cars safely.
Thank you. We have three more members who pressed their buttons as well. Mr. Weisar, Mr. Lavonj, and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for bringing this, and I think, as we all do, that the actions by these individuals, or thugs, as Ms. Hahn called them, is despicable, and we all should share responsibility. First of all, to have victims that did not antagonize the suspects to be beaten like that is inhumane, and as I often take my kids to the Dodger games, to think of the violence that I sometimes see in the parking lot is just completely unacceptable. It's not the type of values we want our children to see or the activities that happen. We want them to enjoy America's great pastime, and I call, as did Ms. Hahn, on the Dodgers to thoroughly review their security procedures and also the city ourselves. This is a semi-public event, that the Dodgers are closely associated with what Los Angeles is all about. We do not want to be known as a city where violence occurs after these events, and so we have as much a responsibility to work with the Dodgers, to see that we review the procedures. And quite frankly, sometimes you can't control for actions upon others, irrational actions as they may be, but we want to feel comfortable that we're doing all we can to try to ensure and protect the public safety at these events. So, thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Reyes, and let this not be the last we hear of this. We want to follow up to make sure we are actually taking some action on this. Thank you.
Mr. Lavonj, Mr. Zine, Ms. Hahn for a second time, Mr. Reyes for a second time.
I just wanted to rise to support Mr. Reyes. We were together yesterday with the mayor, and the mayor was very, very, very concerned and involved with this in his discussion with Mr. Reyes, where we stood with Ms. Berry, where we dedicated a facility for Public Works Department, and I absolutely know the Los Angeles Dodgers are very engaged and involved with this. This is not a good moment for all of the city, after spending 24 years on the sidelines of the Coliseum. And one of the problems was, Ms. Hahn, is we never enforced the law in the City Attorney's office at the Coliseum back in 1980s and 90s with the situation. Mr. Zine, you know, because you were a police officer in Section 8, I was on the field. I looked up at you. That being said, I think our City Attorney, who I spoke with his office, is very engaged in this, and I think we follow Mr. Reyes's lead here, and he's followed the lead of the Police Department Northeast, which I was in this morning, and our other business is extremely involved. It is in Northeast area, and I think this is something that we all have to do. And also, I would look to the state legislation, because if someone wears a jersey of another team, you know, we think about the English or think about other parts of the world. Sometimes in international football, there's these challenges in stadiums. It's a respectful event, and it's a fun event. The only thing I could say to you, Ms. Hahn, because I know you're so passionate about the Dodgers because you're father, is possibly because it was a 5 o'clock start of a game. It was a long day. It was a warm day. People, it's a celebration day. Opening day is a very celebratory day. Allegiant Park was packed with people picketing. Absolutely no excuse. Absolutely no excuse. But in that situation, unfortunately, if you are at public events, sometimes people are not wise, and hopefully, we'll always have wiser people. But look for stronger, strengthened laws, and if you do get to Washington, get a law that's very tough on this, that no one should be harmed this way. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Ms. Hahn pointed out that we should clarify, Mr. Reyes. It's, I think, Thursday, March 31st. That's why I was confused. It says Friday, March 31st, I believe. If we correct that, it was Thursday, March 31st was the opening day. So, I'll make sure that's corrected in the record. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lavonj mentioned, I used to work the Raider games, and the Raider games at the L.A. Memorial Coliseum. There would always be fights, there'd always be hostility, and you go to Dodger Stadium, there's always be a family atmosphere. So, what we have is a paramedic who's married with two children, who's now in critical condition and in a coma. Hopefully, he will survive, but his life will always be changed by this situation that took place. When you look at LAPD, this is a private venue. The Dodger Stadium is a private venue, and through the Police Commission, they now permit officers in uniform to work, and they do work, and it's paid for by the Dodgers, not paid for by the taxpayers. When you look at the venue and this adequate security, they have Dodger security, they have LAPD security, and one thing that troubled me is Mr. McCourt, the owner of the Dodgers, said that he thought they had adequate security. And I know from my own visits, in frequent times that I visit Dodger Stadium, I don't see coverage in the parking lot. I see coverage in the stadium, and once you leave your seat, once you venture in the parking lot, it's dark, there's some lighting, especially a night game, and you get to your car and you hope to get there safe and sound. But this is not the first time that there's been a tragic situation at Dodger Stadium, and if it gets a reputation, as the Raiders had, which attracted a very hostile crowd, families won't want to go to Dodger Stadium. So, I agree with all of my colleagues, but I do agree that they have to increase security. But it is a private venue. LAPD can't say, "We're going to go in there and do a protection." That private venue can only be at the expense and at the invitation of the Dodgers. Unlike the Coliseum, which is a state, a city, a county facility, this is private venue. So, hopefully, they will provide additional officers, and there's many officers who are willing to work that overtime. They do get paid overtime to do that, and I would also hope that the Dodgers would help with this reward. I know there was a $10,000 reward. Mr. Reyes is putting up a $50,000 reward, and hopefully, the Dodgers will step forward and add to that reward because, give an incentive to arrest these individuals and also send a message that this type of activity will not be tolerated in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I commend you for the resolution.
Do you still want to speak, Ms. Hahn, or is it just to correct the record?
To clarify why my remarks might have sounded confusing in the beginning, because I kept looking at Friday, and I knew opening day was Thursday, so it's Thursday, March 31st.
Mr. Reyes.
I was just notified that, and I want to make sure it's known, that $25,000 was put up by the county as well, and $25,000 was put up by, I believe, the Giants. So, we have a sum of resources that are out there to catch these folks, so I'm hoping that's one incentive for any witnesses to step up, to help us capture these folks, these thugs that have committed this crime. And you should know that we have been, in the past few years, working with the Dodgers to enhance security. Sometimes, while it's obvious now, there's never enough, but we have been increasing presence in our roadways, trying to take care of our neighborhoods, as the people come and go. In the parking lot, there has been a change in how they approach security by hiring Los Angeles Police Department officers. Maybe we need to look at assessing the policies of when they sell beer, how long, checkpoints in terms of who's in what condition to be either receiving more beer or not buying more beer. These are issues we need to revisit to create a greater sense of calm and to enjoy this family event. I don't want to give up on the Dodgers. I don't want to give up on Dodger Stadium. It's a great venue. We need to enhance our security and have a much more positive light on what reflects on this great city. So, we need to work towards that end, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a vote on this. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Let's send that forth with to the mayor for a signature. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting reform.
Is there posting referred?
That clears the desk.
I'd like to welcome back Steve Morris, our Sergeant-at-Arms, who is back in chambers. We missed you. Glad to have you back, springing your step and making sure that we are well taken care of you. Mr. Cardenas? Announcement? Yeah, please.
Announcement? I just want to announce that a very famous elephant that was at one time at the L.A. Zoo, Ruby, passed away last week. She was 50 years old. She was an African elephant, and she lived her last four years at the Paus Sanctuary in Northern California, and it's, she was a longtime elephant over at our zoo, and Ruby passed away at the age of 50, and she had a very, very, not, for elephants, not a long, long life, but she certainly had a very public life during most of her 50 years. Thank you.
Mr. Parks, announcement?
Then, colleagues, I'd like to, in behalf of Congresswoman Maxine Waters, let everyone know that on Saturday, April 9th, 11:30 at Jesse Owens Park, 9651 Southwestern Avenue, she's putting on a town hall, community meeting that deals with this HR1, which the council back in February took a position in opposition of that, and this is the legislation that talks about cutting funding from head starts, housing for elderly, public housing cuts, and also, one of the fundamental issues is to eliminate all funding to implement the most recent health care measure. And so, this is something that they're hopeful to have a large crowd to discuss this issue. She certainly sends an invitation to the entire community, plus any of the elected officials that wish to be there. This 11:30 should be about a two-hour program.
Thank you. Other announcements? If not, do we have any adjourned motions today? Does anybody have a... If I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourned motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like you to join me today in adjourning in the memory of Lou Fleming, who died last week at age 85 following a short illness. Lou began a long career as a newsman at the San Gabriel Sun in 1947, but he cemented his reputation in his 30 years at the Los Angeles Times. He was one of the first foreign correspondents at the Times, working principally in Rome and in the Middle East. He also served decades as an editorial writer there, including five years as chief editorial writer. In addition to his contributions to L.A. as a journalist, he was very active in the community, including being a champion for social justice issues at All Saints Episcopal Church in Pasadena, where he served as senior warden. He also chaired the church's groundbreaking God, Sex, and Justice Task Force, which propelled All Saints as a national leadership in the movement for gay and lesbian inclusion in the Episcopal Church and organized religion generally. Fleming is survived by his wife of 63 years, Jeanne Tarr Fleming, his twin brother John, four children, including his daughter Lanny, who lives in Silver Lake, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. His life will be celebrated at a public memorial service at All Saints Pasadena on April 9th at 3:30 p.m. May rest in peace.
Thank you. We'll have a second from Mr. Rosendahl. Are there adjourned motions, Mr. Parks?
President, I have two adjourned motions today. First, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Willie Solomon, who passed away on April 1st, 2011. He was born in 1923 in Montgomery, Alabama, came to Los Angeles in 1940, where he made it his permanent home. He has been an activist throughout the 8th District, dealing with a variety of issues from creating, as a member of the Neighborhood Council, the reflective intersection signs in the Century Palms area. He's also was the chairman of the Community Standards Council in the 8th District, a member of the empowerment congress safety council. He's very instrumental in the 8th District, being a part of a variety of meetings, such as the liaison for 8th District LAX Sound Proofing Program, and also with the city's animal services. He is survived by a host of family members, whose services will be Saturday, April 9th, 11 a.m. at South Side Bethel Baptist Church at 10400 South San Pedro in Los Angeles. Also, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Bernice Beverly Arbor, who passed away March 16th, 2011. She was born in 1916 in Corpus Christi, Texas, and she was the youngest of 11 children. She's a graduate of Prairie View College at the age of 19, and then she moved to Los Angeles subsequent to that, and she taught kindergarten in the city of L.A. for over 30 years at three different schools. She elevated to the position of vice principal while working for the Los Angeles Unified School District. She's received a master's degree from the University of Southern California. Then, she became a licensed real estate broker in the city. She also was instrumental in creating the Circle R Camp in Valverde, which is a summer camp located in Southern California. She also is a member of Holman Methodist Church, a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, founding member of the Los Angeles Chapter of Jack and Jill of America. She's survived by a host of family members. Her services will be held on Thursday, April 14th, at 12:00 noon at Holman United Methodist Church at 3320 West Adams Boulevard.
Thank you. Ms. Berry and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to adjourn in memory of Ben Clayton, who was 91 years old. He attended Alabama State University in 1939 on an athletic scholarship, and after three years, he went to the Tuskegee Airfield and worked as an aircraft mechanic, came to California in 1946, married his wife Elise Franklin a year later, and they had three sons. He was an ironworker and a shop steward for a foundry in the city of Industry, and for many years, he served his community as baseball coach of the Van S. Cardinals. He received many awards from the city of Los Angeles. He was a shriner, an elk, and a mason, and was acknowledged for his work in the community, helping young men as their coach. He is survived by his wife of 64 years, three sons, Ben, Ben Cedric, Elliot Craig, and He is survived by his wife of 64 years, three sons, Ben, Ben Cedric, Elliot Craig, and Richard, five grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and countless number of family and friends.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal.
And colleagues, we adjourn in memory of Margie Loretta Lindstrom, who was born on February 5th, 1927, in Goshen Township, Illinois, and raised in a nearby farming town of Lafayette. Margie was very active in the Lafayette Methodist Church. She dedicated her time volunteering every week, cleaning up and preparing the church for Sunday morning services. The church is where Margie met her husband Dean. The happy couple was married in 1946 and started a family. They moved up and down the state of Illinois, then to Indiana, Texas, and finally, they settled in Westchester in 1957, after having five children along the way. Margie and her husband Dean were active in the community from the get-go. The family joined the Westchester United Methodist Church, and Margie served many years as the financial secretary and wedding hostess. She was also very active with the United Methodist Women's Group, the philanthropic educational organization, and the Methodist Youth Fellowship. She was in a leadership position for both youth groups and church committees. She was an active member of the church and the choir for 54 years. Margie and Dean also participated in the American Field Service Intercultural Program by hosting exchange students from Switzerland and Italy. Margie was a loving wife and devoted mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and friend. Margie passed away on March 7th with her family by her side. Margie is survived by her husband Dean and her five children, Skip, Kevin, Scott, Daniel, and David. The memorial service has taken place on March 26th. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. If there are any adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?